Okay, good evening. It is March 28th. This is the meeting of the Board of Selectmen. All members of the Board are present. If I would, if I could ask everyone in, present here this evening to join me and stand, and I'd ask Selectwoman O'Connell to start us in the pledge of allegiance, if I could.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Hope everyone enjoyed their holiday weekend, for those that celebrate it. We have, the first order of business is transmitting of Treasury warrants thirty-eight, thirty-eight A., thirty-nine, and thirty-nine A. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? I see none, all in favor. Unanimous. Thank you. We do have a couple of sets of minutes to approve, those of January 11th, 2016, February 1st, 2016, and February 10th, 2016. I would accept a motion to take them up as a group unless there's reason or desire on anyone's part to take them up individually.
I move to the, to approve all the minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded. Is there discussion? I see none, all in favor. Unanimous. Thank you. Our seven o'clock scheduled appointment is with Christopher Sullivan, the Animal Control Officer, and it's the introduction of Mr. Sullivan to the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Sullivan, please join us.
Good evening.
How are you, sir?
I'm well.
Welcome.
How are you?
Very well, thank you. Thanks for being here this evening.
Thank you for having me.
Very well. Go right ahead, please.
So, I'm Christopher Sullivan. Little history here, I've worked for the town since 2000. I've dispatched down to the Public Safety Building in that time. When this position for the Animal Control Officer became open, decided to change would do me and my family well, so I applied for it. And it was nice enough that I was accepted, so February I took over the job. And as of right now, I'm just trying to get up to speed. I'm going to an academy that's twelve weeks, every Friday, out in Boylston. I'm just trying to get the department up, you know, to today's standards. I started an animal control Facebook and Twitter page, so anybody loses a dog or finds one, we can get it out on social media, because everybody's on social media. And so, just little things like that, but basically, I'm just trying to get up and running, get up to speed, and here I am.
Thank you very much. So, I want to give all the members of the Board the opportunity to greet you and maybe ask any questions about your sort of platform, if there's, for lack of a better word. Mr. Hall, is there anything that, from your perspective in the Town Manager's Office, that you could complement what we've just heard?
Well, certainly, just to say that based upon Chris's track record as an employee for the town for so many years, when he put in his application, in some respects, I was a little bit surprised, but certainly, sometimes folks like to take a bit of a change of course. I felt that he was amply qualified and certainly had the work ethic. Since he has been on board, I've just personally known, noticed him out and about on a number of occasions. I see him down here, checking in, not only with the offices here, but also just checking on activity down here. He's around town, looking for stray dogs, or, so he's certainly out and about, and I really appreciate his dedication to the position.
Thank you. So, yeah, let me take the opportunity here to open it up to the Board. If it's all right, Ms. O'Connell, I'll start to the left and go through.
Sure. Just wanted to say, thank you for being here. It's a pleasure to meet you, and obviously, I'm thrilled to have this opportunity tonight. I appreciate the background that you had given, and I'm certainly happy for personal promotion for you within the department. You've obviously had dedication and performance with the town of Wilmington, and this is just an extension of that. So, I've seen the social media pages that you've created. I've heard a lot of positive feedback up to this point, and certainly look forward to seeing you out and about and around town. I think it's definitely an area that's needed, and I'm sure the officers that are on the department will rely on you in situations as they community police the area. So, welcome this evening, and thank you for all that you do, and look forward to future updates. So, thank you.
Once again, just to echo my colleagues, I wish you all the best of luck, and I'm really glad the manager took the time to realize that we need our own animal care officer, as opposed to going regional, because what happens if there's three calls at one time? So, it made perfect sense, and I did support having somebody on board full-time here, so, and I want to wish you the best, and obviously, you've got some longevity with the department, and I'm sure you're going to do the town great.
Mrs. Mabry?
Yes, Chris, thank you for being here and for stepping up in this position, which I'm sure you'll find very interesting. And I also want, on a personal note, thank you for coming by the office and introducing yourself, and I think you've done that to some other department heads and other departments, and thank you for that initiative, and it's good to see you out there.
Thank you.
Thanks. And good luck.
Mr. House?
Congratulations on your change of direction within the town, and appreciate the work that you've already started to do, and look forward to great success for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll share with all of my colleagues, I want to wish you congratulations, first and foremost, on taking on this new challenge in your, in your life. I'm excited about taking the Animal Control Officer position into the 21st century with technology, which is a remarkable thing, I think. So, we're looking forward to your new ideas and your implementation of some of those new ideas, and really, ultimately, I think what will be a real positive will be a much more visible presence within the community, both yourself and as well as sort of the office of the, of the Animal Control Officer. And I have a tendency to do that, I call it the dog officer, so I don't know if you want to expand on, maybe some, sort of what the role is. I think I have a predisposition towards dog control, but there's more to it.
That's fine, because I did too, and I've been on the job for two months, and the least amount of animals that I've dealt with are dogs. I've had goose calls, I've had a bird call, I've had a chipmunk call, so really, it's learning about all types of animals, and that's what the academy is teaching us, it's not just dogs or cats anymore. So, it's really a full-time position that's needed, so I'm just going to do the best that I can. You know, there are some instances I'm not going to be able to do, but at least I'll respond, and I'll point them, the residents or whoever, in the right direction to get the help needed, or I can make a phone call and get somebody out there who's maybe more qualified to assist.
That's great.
Have you dealt with any raccoons yet?
Many.
There you go.
It's spring now, so the raccoons and the skunks are coming out.
There you go.
I have this one chipmunk that's been a real pain for a long time. We're going to talk offline.
All right.
How about bats? You handle bats?
Yeah, I'll, I'll respond out there. I have a net, and I'll do the best I can.
You're going to get your number after the, no, very.
You're one of the business guys.
Seriously.
I would just note, Mr. Chairman, that one of the things that's been incredibly refreshing is just the fact that the level of responsiveness, you know, as Chris has indicated, he's not going to be able to solve everyone's problem, but the fact that he's responding, responding in a timely manner, you know, in many cases, as we, those of us who are in this line of work in the public sector, you can't always solve everyone's problems, but I think many times, the fact that you respond in a timely manner, in a professional and courteous manner, that goes a long ways towards leaving a favorable impression. So, I think that's, that's what Chris has demonstrated to this point, and I expect him to continue to do so.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And unless there's anything else, we'll say thank you again for being here, and wish you, wish you great luck.
All right. Thank, thank you all for having me.
All right. Good evening. Our 7:15 scheduled appointment is with Michael Begonis, our Police Chief, to discuss with us the possibility of a firearms training facility here in Wilmington. Chief Begonis?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Thank you to the Board of Selectmen for asking me here tonight. I guess, I presented a proposal to the Town Manager, which I believe he's, he's submitted to the Board. For the public, that plan that I have submitted is to enhance the development of training, specifically with the use of weapon systems within the Police Department. Currently, let me just go through the process. I guess our objective right now is currently, we train twice a year, so we have one day shoot, one night shoot. That day shoot is held in Harvard, Mass., at the Harvard Sportsman's Club. It's quite a trip to get there. We find that in an eight-hour training, by the time you get there, by the time you set up and do everything you need to do, you severely reduce the amount of time you have actually in training. And I'll cover why that's critical a little later. So, we felt in the Police Department, as one of our main goals was to reestablish a training facility here in town, with the objective of enhancing, you know, the more specific skills that we are required to have in today's day and age, especially with the situations with active shooter and other issues that we have contemporary to us now. So, the plan would be, rather than train on one or two days a year, to break that out into four-hour blocks and do that multiple times a year, so that there's adherence to the adult learning principles of recency and repetition. So, recency is learning that is closer together, develops better in the adult mind, and repetition. These are motor sensory skills, things that you, when you're in a heightened sense of fear or, or concern for your life in a situation where, which would be a volatile situation with anything having to do with deadly force. You know, we don't want you to have to sit and go through a list of things that you need to do and understand, quite specifically, because time is of the essence. We want you to be able to revert to your training. So, you know, that said, training, training is critical, and we've seen training deficiencies in the past, or little quirks. There was a Florida situation years ago, where the FBI agents were involved in a shootout, and several of them were killed in that process, and some others were injured, and they found at the end that most of the officers of FBI agents had picked up their brass and put it in their pockets, because that's what they were trained to do on the range. So, it's just a motor response. It's automatic. You can't stop it. When you get into a critical situation, you develop a kind of a tunnel vision. All the blood rushes to your core, it leaves your extremities, that's why people shake. There's a lot that goes on there, and you really, it's a fight or flight situation. So, if you're trained and you're developed over a period of time, these very regimented, strict skill sets, you'll follow them. Hence why, if you're trained to pick up your brass after every time you shoot before you move to the next line, in just target practice, that's exactly what you'll do in a, in a critical situation. So, our plan would be to try to train that type of response out of officers on scene. So, in the document that I provided, it, it's, I think, very well, very well lays out in a brief summary, several things. We have the objective, history, current status, our training needs, our training and use plan, the locations, the bullet containment device comparison, our selection of the bullet granular rubber trap, a financial plan, a safety and security plan for the location, a conclusion. We've also added in some maps of the site plan, as well as locations of sound testing, and a memo from the Director of Board of Health, which details a sound study that we did the week, last week. So, if we look at the history of what's brought us to this point, of course, I get on back in the late 80s. At that time, we trained at the Abigail Island Site. And back then, there were anywhere between 40, 42, to 44 officers, that fluctuated year to year. We're quite similar to that, we're only at 48. But that time, we had two trainings, a day training and a night training, and we trained on two weapon systems at the time. So, we had a nine-millimeter pistol, and we also had the shotgun. And that was the extent of our equipment at the time. Over the years, currently today, we have multiple weapon systems. So, we have the pistol, which is a 40 caliber, we have the shotgun still, we also have a patrol rifle, 40-millimeter projectile munitions, which is our less lethal component. So, you can just see, we've already added a couple of weapon systems that we didn't have in the early, in the, in the early 90s. But the training never increased. The amount of time we had on the training site didn't increase. The other difficulty we had is now, we're no longer at that site, and we're traveling on to Harvard for our training. Being a visitor at Harvard, we can't get consecutive weeks. We have to break it out onto their schedule, on how we fit it in, so it's very difficult and regimented on how we can develop training. So, any extra training we want to do, we find it almost impossible to get bookings for that and to fit that in with our schedule. So, about two years ago, we had brought this before the Town Manager requesting to take a look to see if there were other options in, in town, other than the Abigail Island Site. Originally, we had recognized that there was a, you know, an overuse of that site by multiple police departments, and, you know, I think that the time that there were a few cities and other folks that were coming in there on a regular basis. And there were times even, we had difficulty getting an opportunity to get in there and train, only because the schedule was so full. And it became, it became overbearing, and we understand some of the reasonings behind considering closing that back then, because it was just, I think, overused at the time. So, being aware of that, we originally looked at several other sites in town, through the engineering maps, and we had selected a couple of locations that we thought would, would work. We actually had a study done at one, and in the interim, we kept coming back to the Abigail Island Site, where the range, previous range already still existed. And that was at the suggestion of department heads, that that would probably be the best place to go back to, only because it already existed, it already had that experience there, and people kind of knew what they could expect out of it. The entire time, understanding that the conversation was always about limiting use, reducing use, taking care of the environment, and making sure we had a solid plan for that. So, we bring this to today, you know, the current status, obviously, you don't have to go very far, turn on any news channel, and you'll see that, you know, the violence within society is quite frightening, and it's quite common at this point. I mean, something you see almost every single day. Officer-involved shootings, you know, ambushers of police officers, all of these things are very critical. And we just feel that an extra level of training would be important for us in the town, just to give the officers skills, and I'll go over a couple of those in a moment. So, right now, our current status is, we train in the fall, we have an eight-hour block. As I said, by the time you get there to Harvard, you set up, you do everything you need to do, you're getting four and a half hours roughly, if you're lucky, if it's a great day and everything works smoothly, five in training, and then you have to clean up, break down, and drive back. So, it runs anywhere in the average officer, 30, 30 minutes to 45 minutes to get back and forth to Harvard each way. So, you're losing a great amount of time out of the training day, which is already a concern of ours, to start with, that we weren't getting enough time. That night shoot is done in, at the Andover Sportsman Club, and they're great folks, and we're lucky to have them allow us to be there, but they also have concerns, just like Harvard does, with use and, and overusing, because they have all of their other folks that come in and other departments that use it as well. And so, you know, scheduling sometimes is difficult, and we can't, for the night shoot, can't even get on the range until after five. So, that means at five o'clock, we're starting to set up. And we usually try to push that as late in the season as we can, so that we have darkness coming down, and we can get as much time in there as possible. Our biggest concern is, two-thirds of what we do at night is roughly in the dark. So, that's the average police officer, so we're reducing the amount of time that they have to train on weapons to a four-hour block at night. We feel that that should be something that we definitely develop and work harder on, because everything changes at night. Your sight picture, the whole dynamic of just moving completely changes at night, and quite frankly, that's most of what we do sometimes out of years at night. So, those are our concerns. We're looking to increase. I would like to see a training program that gets up roughly around 24 hours for the police officers, broken into four-hour blocks, so they're, they're getting critical tasks and running critical drills more often with less time. And I think with that training plan, we can probably increase, if not double, the training time we have now for roughly the same amount of personnel cost that we have, that we spend today. So, if you go through the proposal, you look at, you know, our training needs, and, you know, just detailing some of the ones that jump off at me in the, the day shoot, which is a, you know, extensive three-column, and these are just things off the top of our head that we need to cover. Offhand shooting, you know, injured hand shooting, things like that, you know, quite often, police officers, you know, you're in, you're in the thick of it, bad things are happening, and you get injured. And they need to know that they're not out of it at that point, that they still have options, still things that they can do. So, just running a drill, if you needed to reload your weapon, you only had one hand, how would you do it? And, and that's a critical skill, because if you've never done it, you're figuring it out as you go, and that's probably the worst time you want to be doing it, when, when things aren't going well for you. So, you want to be able to think of all these scenarios and cover that training ahead of time. Transitioning. We have less lethal weapons within the department, and I think it's critical, especially in today's day and age, to train into the mindset of a police officer, that they need to be constantly looking at the level of threat and understanding that. At some point in time, I may need to be up here, but something could change, and I could come back down here, and vice versa, move back up. And so, if you haven't trained that, if that's not something that you're aware of, something that you've been programmed to do and to look at and to understand, in a critical situation, when you're in that fight or flight scenario, you've got tunnel vision, and you might react in a way that probably isn't the best way you want to at the end. So, all of that is a very critical, critical part of training. Transitioning, like I said, weapon systems, transitioning to reload if you're injured, malfunction drills is another one, because quite often, you know, if, if you're not holding the weapon properly, the weapon will not cycle properly. So, if you're holding it too loose, the round goes off, the slide will all come back, and it will bring in another round, and malfunction. So, just running through malfunction drills is a critical part of what we do. So, you can understand, if you're nervous and you're in a situation, you'll make that simple mistake. You need to now to quickly clear that and get back into the situation where you can save lives. So, you look at all the different things we have, we have a canine, just running the canine through a scenario, because a canine, whenever they deploy, they deploy with a cover officer. The canine handler is busy handling the dog. So, they need to really understand that they have a cover officer that's in whatever situation with them, and that's the person that goes and transitions to lethal force, if that's what's required in the situation, and drilling that and understanding that, so that they're communicating properly, so that there's not a crossfire situation, so there's no, you know, chance of somebody getting hurt, that you don't want to hurt, and that. Those are very, very important. Quite often, these things are volatile, so if you, if you injure one eye, how do you still shoot without that eye? Because, you know, when you're shooting, you usually, you know, whatever eye is on the same dominant side as the one you use, but if that gets injured, how would you do that? How would you, how would you still maintain accuracy and, and cover the threat if you had that injury? So, those are things that we, we really, we have tried to cover every one of these. The problem is, they get a very quick overview and a very quick drill in the process, and if you do it once a year, I say that that skill diminishes over time. And, you know, in police service, we have police officers that have high skill sets in this, some people have lower skill sets in this. Some people are better communicators than others. So, you know, we have that big variable within the department, that we have to really take the time and, and train these type of things into the officers, so they understand them. But, you know, a really big one is cold weather training. And you don't think of that, but if you go out there and you're wearing a big, heavy coat, and all of a sudden, something happens, how do you manipulate that clothing to get to what you need? Because it's hanging over your big belt, and, you know, it could be a snowstorm, and it reminds me of, you know, the Jack McGuire homicide. You know, it was a, it was a very cold, snowy night, and we were out there running around, and we had heavy equipment on. Those are some of the issues that you really have to understand. You have to train for that. That's not something that you really can make up on the fly, or have the ability to address that. So, when you look at this, it's very comprehensive, but I would argue that probably none of these are more important than the other, on the grand scheme of things, because they're, it's the most important thing, if that's the critical skill you need when you need it. So, that's just the day shoot. Now, you take all of those, compound that on the night shoot, with the difference of, you know, vision, perception, all of those other things, depth, distance, everything changes at night. It's not, it's not the same. So, if you're not using these skills, if you don't struggle to get your cold weather coat off, and be able to deploy your weapon, and go through some of these different processes that we've talked about, if it's the first time you've ever done it, you could have difficulty with it. Shooting from a motor vehicle, you know, it's not something that we encourage, but the reality of it is, is if you have to start your cruiser and try to deploy like the long arm that's in there, turn all the switches off, unlock it, take it out, make it ready, that's a long process. And if you've never done it, if you've never trained to pull up on a scene that you're told is hot, and told to deploy that weapon, and then address three or four targets as they're called out, you're going to bumble through that skill. So, our hope is to be able to have that opportunity with our own range, to inject cruisers into the situation, use that, you know, that higher level of training, and bring scenarios that are real, that happen every day, that enhance just what some people think is police target practice, where you're just, you know, the old days of the FBI, standing there, you know, shooting 50 rounds into a target, and you don't move at all. Everything we do now has movement in it. There's movement, it has turning. We develop, like I said, a lot of the malfunction drills and make them repetitive, so that the folks can get more time on that and better change that skill. Just with a handgun at night, I mean, you have a, you know, our patrol pistols have a light that's mounted on them, but if that malfunctions, you also have a flashlight in your hip. So, you need to be able to know how to use the one in the front of the gun, you also need to know how to use the one in your hip, because you want to be able to illuminate things if you need that. And if you've never trained it before, you can get what they call the, you know, the rub knuckle. You know what I mean? Because you're going to put your hand in a place that you don't want to put it, and when the gun goes off, that's when your nick fingers break things, and it doesn't go well. So, you have to train that. Because if you don't, when it's critical, that's when it's going to go bad. So, we have the whole list of night shoot, day shoot options. We also replicate those at night and add all of these low-light issues along with that. And I suggest it's, it's really, it's really critical and important that we start looking towards that, because it's, you know, it's not the 1950s anymore. Unfortunately, things have changed, and, and the different scenarios of use of force, I think, are coming with more frequency, and the FBI statistics show that, that, you know, you just, you just don't know. You can't pick and choose a community that is going to happen, and so. So, we developed a training and use plan. Obviously, we, you know, we know that we want to be able to enhance all of those skills and get more time and frequency. So, part of that plan was, you know, to, to take all of those things and break them down, so that when we go, we'll take a four-hour block, and we'll work on several of those skills in a four-hour block. We'll do that multiple times during the year, so there's, there's not a year span before, between the time you've used the weapon last in a training situation and the next. And we think we'll be able to enhance fairly quickly. I have some, you know, three great instructors that do a wonderful job, so. So, when we decided on a location, after consultation with, you know, all of the department heads that, that have that within their expertise, you know, the suggestion kept coming back to the Abigail, Abigail Island Site, and looking at that and seeing how we could develop a plan that would mitigate some of the issues and concerns we had before, obviously, lead is a concern. You know, nothing in this document that I put forward suggests that lead is not a concern, but, you know, before, we were shooting into a gravel berm, which is probably one of the most difficult berms to remediate lead from. And we never really had a plan with that, that I'm aware of, that there was a standard remediation every so many years. It was just done that way for 20 years, and nobody really thought much of it. And a legitimate concern, you know, lead is a, is, is something that you, you want to be concerned with. So, my understanding was that site had been remediated, and our plan was to suggest a, you know, a proper way to build that site backup with proper sound mitigation, lead mitigation, all of those different items that were concerned before. All the time thinking about reducing the amount of training that's done in this site, reducing the amount of departments that came there, and really restricting that, that, this impact on that footprint. So, we were looking at it, obviously, they, they did some, we had several meetings, and in looking at it, they, they thought that, well, what if we took it out of that lower area where the range was, and we bumped it up and just put it another 10, 15 to 20 feet up out of the, the area where water table possibly was a concern? And they looked at that, and with that new plan, they were able to just move the site to, would say, easterly, slightly north, but mostly easterly, from the old location, and it's, it's very high above the water table. So, if you look at the, this is a different part, throw that after. Some of the other things we looked at was berm size, and how to be able to control and contain that, because we don't want to expand the footprint. So, we had looked at these things that they call HESCO barriers, and I'm sure that Lou Semaglia has probably, probably seen them as the, as the veteran agent. These things are, they're just basically a heavy-duty fabric that's put into a wire mesh, and they can contain soil in a more vertical status. So, these things, the ones we were looking at, run 15 feet long, they're four feet wide by four feet tall, and they're stackable. And so, you actually create your berm on a smaller footprint, as it's developed with these barriers here. The plan would be to, you know, obviously mitigate any lead in the area, and develop a system that was easy to mitigate and remediate, to take lead out of the, out of the environment. So, when we go to the area of bullet containment device comparison, we compared earthen berms, the pros and cons, sand traps, the pros and cons, Lamella, which is a, is a rubber style of fabric. fabric, pros and cons, the granular rubber trap and steel traps and concrete traps. And when we looked at it, we detailed the pros and cons of all of them. We felt that the rubber granular trap was probably the best bet for us, because as you can see in the document a couple pages back, it, when the lead shot goes into it from the, from the handguns, it's encapsulated in a copper sheeting. It doesn't distort, it doesn't fragment, it doesn't break up. So you're using, putting less lead fragmentation into the bullet trap, which also makes it easier to clean out. So what you have is this staircase style trap that's loaded with rubber granule on the front of it, and as the bullet goes in, the bullet penetrates and decelerates into the rubber without breaking up and fragmentating and causing lead dust. So the package you have discusses that, and then, you know, we go into the, the different styles of trap. The rubber granule trap, like I said, was, was kind of what we felt was the best option for this area. We had spoken with several other departments that have them, and they, and they really do like them. Your remediation on them is a lot more simple than taking a whole dirt berm out, laying it out, shifting through it, taking all the lead out. It's basically rubber, rubber and lead that look nothing alike, and it's not fragmented. So you can take these things out and get it cleaned up. So quickly, the financial plan, obviously, there's, this does not come without a cost. When we took a look at it, you know, $130,000 to $150,000 is a lot of money, and we don't, we don't think of that, that expense lightly. The plan for this would be not to impact the taxpayers in the process. The plan with this would be to take the drug forfeiture money that we have seized from drug dealers and other criminal enterprises over the years and take that money and put it back into a resource for police training. So we've saved some money over the last couple of years, really haven't spent a lot out of that as it's coming in, come in, and feel that we have enough to clearly meet that or exceed that number, if the plan seems to develop into needing more. These bullet traps are delivered on site and erected on a concrete pad, like I said, mitigating the, you know, the drainage in the area and all of the other impacts that you would have. So currently, if we look at the average training year, we're roughly about, we've spent about roughly $40,000 in overtime on firearms training. This year, unfortunately, will probably double that number. We had our regular firearms training, we had an issue where the sighting systems that we use on all of our weapons, EOTech, had some difficulties that were discovered by special forces officers and operators, and that company, not saying a recall, basically recalled all of those weapons and said, if you, if you give us back those sighting systems, we will give you a full refund for what you paid for at the time. The difficulty of that was having concerns over the sighting system, we felt it was prudent just to take all of those sighting systems offline at that point, which kind of puts us into a little bit of difficulty with what systems we can use and what systems we can't. And that's a great concern of ours right now. So to get everybody back on target with the new sighting system, which is similar, but it is different, we're going to be looking in that $35,000 to $40,000 year range this year in a budget item that we did not plan for. And that's because I have to, I have to go to Harvard to do that, so it has to be done mostly on overtime. It's the whole, putting the package together and packing up the tents and moving over there, which one of our things with having a localized range is, a lot of that, we could probably mitigate, if we had our own, we could probably mitigate that a lot, a lot cheaper in the long run, by being able to pull people off a shift, staggering the times you went, and being a little bit more creative in how we brought people to the range to retrain on that site system. So that's something, I guess, we can't fix this year, you know, that's something that we have to do coming up, because even if we were able to pull this off, you know, this, with a timeframe, we're probably looking at next fall by the time this gets online, ordering the RFPs and all the different things like that and getting up and running. And once again, the goal is to bring our standardized training to a 24 hour level, so that we're doing all of these things in four hour blocks or smaller blocks more frequently and increase from 12 to 24 hours. I think that we're going to have a huge gain, because you won't take the travel time that we do now. I mean, they'll be able to start at eight and finish it, finish it four and get their full eight hours in at this site and not have much of a concern with travel. So we also, one of the big things that we discussed was a safety and security plan. So obviously, this is a known site to us, it's someplace that we already had a security plan for before, but looking at that, we would like to institute some enhancements to it as well. And I guess at the end of the day, establish a very strict special order from the police department, which I had developed today, and we'll detail most of these things on signage, use, access, emergency access of the DPW to the site if they had to go out there, if they had a water main break or they needed to fix something, they needed access to equipment or, or product that was out there, a whole plan on how to shut down the range, get them out there, get there with the need, have them leave, resecure the site and start the training back up again. You know, a lot of thought and effort went into that. Our plan would be, it's a police department only access, it's not something that the general public could use, and we'd have a whole security plan for that. And anytime we're down there, we'd have qualified and credentialed experienced instructors certified under the Massachusetts Criminal Justice Training Committee there on site with us, so that they have a specific safety plan. That safety plan is briefed before and after each, each shooting day. When you look through, you would have the W, you know, the Wilmington Fire Department do a walkthrough, to have an understanding of the location, have an understanding of access in and out, understanding of what we would be doing and if somebody was to get injured out there, how they would get in and get out fairly quick, to full details of landing zones and everything for med flight or whatever happened to happen out there. We believe it's going to be safe from vandalism, it is an isolated location, that's kind of why we liked it best, it's very difficult to get through, you have to take the causeway to get in, other than that, you know, you'd probably have to swim over, so. Very, very restricted. Lot of signage, you know, we'd have extra patrols established down there in an awareness of the police department, that this is an area that really is someplace we have to keep as pristine as possible and, you know, and secure. Years ago, there were people who would go down there on Saturdays and shoot that were not invited, that were not supposed to be there, so that whole thing will be articulated in my special order to the police department, that that would be, that would be something we wouldn't tolerate, and they would have to make sure they addressed right out of the, right out of the chute. So, you know, the whole training plan talks about notification, so, you know, obviously there will be no training unless the DPW director is agreeable to it, so if they have a big project going on and they run out all the time, it's not the week for us. So we would work that out with them. At the end, we would notify the town manager, so he was aware that that's when the training was going to be. It's fairly easy, Mike Woods said he needed it, you know, a week. I think he would probably get more than that on any given time, because we usually know a month or so ahead of time as we develop our training plan, when we're going to be there. So, you know, barring some catastrophe or bad weather or some major staffing issue that has just made it so that we can't do it, we'd be able to be fairly consistent with our training plan. So I guess that they, you know, for my part at the conclusion, I, you know, I, once again, I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for, you know, allowing me to bring this proposal and entertaining it. I want to thank, you know, Paul Aloni, Valerie Gingrich, Shelley Newhouse, Al Spalding, Mike Woods, for their, you know, expertise and help through this process. For my department, Deputy Chief Robert Richter, my, my, you know, number, number one supporter in the police department, the guy that, you know, pretty much nothing gets done unless we vetted it back and forth for a while, you know, his support is utmost important. Lieutenant Scott Sensabaugh, Officer Kaminsky, and Brian Stickney, who are all my training instructors, also put a lot of effort into this. And more importantly, you know, Jeff Hall's support, because if two years ago, you know, I've been asking for years, if two years ago he didn't say yes, we'll take a look at this and see if we can develop something, you know, we certainly wouldn't be here today. And, you know, I just appreciate the support we've had going along. You know, back in 2005, when I became police chief, I was asked what I thought were my priorities at the time. In 2005, we were changing, the world was changing, a lot of stuff was changing, and I recognized then, along with the deputy chief, that we had a deficiency in the level of training that we had. We had a place where we wanted to be and we knew we weren't there. And we have really worked hard to try to, try to get to that level, and I think this would be a capstone to that, that plan, that process of getting us to where we at least are talking about the things that are critical to the officers that are out there. And I think that having that conversation will make them safer, it'll make the public safer and in general, you know, prepare us for anything we need to, need to handle. You know, I suggest that this is, this is a, you know, an issue that is to all, all police departments. If you look at all the major situations that have come down, or incidents have come down over the last several years, it's not just the local community that responds. You know, if we have a problem, people from other communities come and help us, and vice versa. And we want to make sure that we're prepared to go to, not only Wilmington, but any community with that level of expertise and understanding and knowledge and skill set that has been programmed to us, to make sure that we save lives in the process. So I guess, you know, Columbine, the mentality was surround it and wait for the SWAT team to get there. We saw valuable lives lost in that process. So the mandate of current law enforcement is, you get a team of three to four people ready, you go right in as soon as you get there. So that's the three or four people of the shift. I mean, that's any three or four police officers in the Wilmington Police Department, could be the three that go in and, and, and address whatever threats there. And I suggest that, you know, we really need to prepare at a higher level, because this is a real great concern of ours, you know, not only for their safety, like I said, but for everyone else's safety. So I guess we have some maps, so if, if you look at this map here, you can see that the engineering department has, has provided this. This is the causeway we talked about, this is the Abigail Island. This is the previous range site, and this would be the proposed range site, so it's easterly of that site, slightly north. Slightly smaller footprint, because it fits in that location much better. You know, with the, with the time and effort spent on that, you know, I think it's innovative, because you're probably, I don't know, maybe you're 12 to 14, 15 feet higher than you were from the previous location. So, I mean, with that, that takes you out of your water table concerns, your 200 year, 100 year flood issues. And I'm not an engineer, I'll speak at any time. So one of the things was also a concern, was repeated to us on multiple occasions, was the noise, the noise factor of this. So what we did was, we went down, we set up a bunch of sandbags and we shot two weapon systems into the sandbags, and each time, we had the Director of Border Health, Shelley Newhouse, with a sound meter, take the decibel change, the delta and the decibel reading, which can be classified, my understanding, as noise pollution if it, if it goes 10 dB above the ambient noise. So in all these different locations, if you look in your packet, it actually discusses them in there, and there was nothing that went towards 10. Most of them were, I think the highest was two, maybe three, and actually one, at that present time, with the average DBA that was running with the ambient noise, when no trucks came by, you still couldn't hear the weapon being fired from that location. So, you know, some time and thought went into this. Obviously, this is developed by engineering and the Board of Health, and we appreciate their help on, help on that. So when you look at the, the new proposed range, all of a sudden, you can see that there will be some changes to some of the contour lines in here. If you've been to this site, you know it's really rocky and hilly, looks like it's a construction zone where people just dump piles of, of, of stuff and boulders and rocks and things like that. So it's very, very hilly. The DPW believes that they can probably clean that up and get it well graded within a couple of days with the proper equipment. This is what you see here is the berm, along with the HESCO barriers that we discussed earlier. The blessing of that is it decreases the footprint. You don't need a, you know, a 20, 40 foot berm to go 10 feet, 12 feet high, you need a smaller berm, because the HESCO barriers are more vertical and they're more stable on that platform. In here is the concrete pad, so it's roughly a little about 30 by 16. That's designed so that you can place the bullet trap on top of that and it gives a stable platform so it doesn't shift and move. Obviously, it's, you know, it's a, at that point, it's a pretty expensive asset and you want to make sure that it's maintained. So access into it, like I said, would be through the causeway, there is a current road that is, exists in the site already, the way we used to access the old range, so you'd come down, this would probably be the parking area right down here, and the officer would be able to walk up. The only buildings or anything would be up there would be either one 40 foot Conex trailer or two 20 foot Conex trailer, and that's so we could store paper targets, all the materials and things that we need for there. There would be no weapons or ammunition stored on site ever. Our plan for this site would be to carry and carry out, so whatever we bring in for the day, other than those things we would store in a trailer, trash or anything like that would come out with us at the end of the night. Hours of operation, because that's always a concern, no earlier than eight o'clock in the morning, only Monday through Friday, and we would be done by nine o'clock at night. The reason that nine o'clock at night is so important, because if you look at the, the different dusk, dawn recordings that we have annually, there were some times when you get in there, you know, in order to really be shooting at night for that four hour block, we'd have to be someplace in December, the only time you could do it. So to have flexibility in, in how we design our training plan and our schedule, we would have to be able to get in a little bit earlier for that, so that's why we'd have to pump it out to nine o'clock at night. But like I said, the regular patrols, there is a, over in the end of the causeway, there'll be a gate, there'll be signage on multiple locations, red flags, big iron signs that say, you know, police firearms training and use. All of that would be communicated with the DPW beforehand, so they would know. Way in advance, it was, we're going to be training there, and if they'd be notified that date, it would be training there, so everybody would know. Should be no reason for anybody to be, be difficult, very difficult for them to walk into this area, unknown. So I, I think that it's a very well developed plan, I was quite impressed when, you know, when folks came up with the elevating the range to alleviate some of the other issues and concerns they had. I think that with the bullet trap system and the, you know, the ability to keep the lead bullets intact and be able to mitigate them and take them out, we have a plan for that. I, you know, I know some places have, you know, somebody from the DPW will come and mitigate it for them and take it out, I would suggest that's not something we want to do. Obviously, lead is a concern for everybody and you want to be able to document in a town who removed the lead and where the lead went after they removed it, so that you don't have a liability on and after. If somebody takes that and just dumps it into a landfill someplace and then they find out, you know, it came from the town of Wilmington, you'd have some, some issues with that. So I would suggest, under following the best management practices, designed by the EPA, that we would make sure that we had a reputable company come in and do that. I think it's, it'd be money well spent in the process. It's a lot.
[laughing] Is that it?
That's it.
Great. Thank you, Chief. It's a, it's a lot of information, as you said. I appreciate the comprehensive proposal that you put in before us and the thorough presentation here this evening. I suspect that my colleagues will all have questions and concerns or observations to make. I have some of my own, but I want to start, I think, with, with my colleagues here. Jeff, let me start with you first, I don't know if you have any, any, either recommendations or feedback or any other kind of commentary to make relative to what we just heard?
Well, certainly, I would in large measure echo what the chief has indicated, that from my perspective, the priority here is to enhance the level of training that our police officers have. You know, when you're talking about the type of situations that would prompt a use of force, these are low frequency, high risk situations, so when, when officers are called upon to use force, they need to be comfortable with the tools that they have at hand, so to speak, and be accurate. And, you know, I think we can all think of situations in our own lives where there's some particular skill that requires a measure of practice, and the more repetition you get in that skill, and I don't want to trivialize this, but whether it's shooting the foul shot when the, you're down by two and you need two shots, or whether it's, you know, something, you know, much more critical, so to speak, repetition matters. So, you know, I think the idea of being able to increase the amount of training time, having it occur more than twice during the course of a year are very important. You know, clearly, I understand there's, there's a history with this particular site in terms of its overuse, and it's my expectation that we will not repeat that, that this will be, the use will be for Wilmington police officers. We're not expecting, or we're not, we would not allow the general public to use this, this is specifically for police training purposes. So, you know, I think the intent was to provide the Wilmington police officers with a, an area where they could train, where we weren't subject to the prospect of being asked to leave another site, either because of concerns that that particular community or gun club had about the overuse or any number of circumstances. I think it's being able to control our own I think it's being able to control our own training site is important, and just the economy, so to speak, of being able to get to and from it in a relatively quick time is, is also important. So, you know, I think this can be managed in a, in an appropriate manner. We've taken great pains to look at the environmental situation there. We recognize that this Abigail Island area is in a sensitive area, but I would point out that even in the prior situation, where we had nearly twenty years' worth of use firing into a earthen berm, that when the operation was shut down and the lead was remediated, we had testing done, and at that time, the lead levels in the groundwater were not, did not exceed the levels that DEP sets as, as levels that, that they would be concerned about. So, you know, that situation, I think, was far less, quite frankly, perhaps well-thought-out, or far less environmentally sensitive than the one we proposed to have here, where the lead is going to be captured and then regularly removed. So, with all that, I'm satisfied and believe this is an appropriate approach to take.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. So, I'm not going to start at one end. I guess I'll ask if anyone has specific questions, or if someone wants to be first, please raise a hand, or, or ask, or chime in, or... Yeah, Mr. McCord.
I don't have any questions. I'll make a comment. I've lived in Wilmington all my life, and I never knew we had an Abigail Island, let alone a firing range. And from what I read from the information, from 1985 to 2002, it was an active range. In 1994, I moved to Treasure Hill Road, so I'm, essence, the closest person sitting here, or anybody in the room, that lived in this area. And when I was, moved to Treasure Hill in 1994, the range was still active through nineteen, no, 2002. So, you're looking at eight years. We had a newborn in November 1994, and two toddlers. And I looked at my wife Danielle, because I know about this proposal, I go, "Do you ever remember, you ever hear of, you know, gunshots? Have you ever heard of it?" "Not at all." So, in 1985 to the year 2002, I served the majority of those years as a member of the Board of Selectmen. I don't remember a constituent ever complaining about it. So, obviously, I live in the area, and I called the town manager. I thought it would be a good idea for me to take a look at the range. First of all, I support it, but I'll go further. So, we looked at the old site, and we took a tour, and I honestly, I'm looking out, I don't see any residential homes. I'm really, we spent our time, I'm really looking out at that point. And then got a call that you decided to change it, makes sense, because it's in wetlands within the flood zone, so they just really flipped it on the other side. And once again, I asked, would like to take a tour of it, so I wanted to take a look for myself. And I can tell folks out there, they need not to worry that live in that area. I mean, I've lived in that area going on twenty-two years, and I've never heard a gunshot, and was active for the eight years that I've lived up there, number one. Number two, I couldn't see a residential home, and I take safety, you know, serious. And, you know, once again, we live in a different society. You always hear on the news, "Well, I never thought it could happen in my backyard, or this could happen." We live in a crazy society, and I would, and I don't have a problem supporting it. I think it's a great thing. I live in the area, and I never, can honestly say, I never, you knew it existed. I never even knew that the police officers were actually shooting down that area. And, but, I think it's a good thing for the town of Wilmington, and I fully support it, and I think you've done your job. And I met with the town manager, the chief, and Superintendent Mike Woods. On both occasions, we spent a good amount of time. Feel very secure, very safe about it, and I don't think anyone really needs to worry in that area, you know? So, I just thought I'd share those thoughts, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. McCord. Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, yeah, if I may. A couple of points that I'd like to reiterate to everybody listening. The environmental impact is, the town manager brought it up, the chief brought it up, there was years of overuse over there, like they said, years, of shooting into a sand pile, a dirt berm. And there was never any lead removal system or anything. And when GeoInsight went in there, I, when this was brought up, I also got that, the report from GeoInsight, and there was no lead to be, to be found in there, well under the standards. Having said that, now we're talking about a more controlled environment, our department using it, and with this new lead recovery system, I mean, I don't think that the environmental impact is, should be an issue with anyone. As far as the training goes, as they do in the military, it's a constant train, whether it's new weapons or situations that, that might not come up, and hopefully never come up, in the whole time of a police officer's career. But they do. And if they do, I want, as a resident of Wilmington that has a family here, I want the police officers that are going to go in there to be highly trained, to be able to have the, the confidence to use whatever force is necessary with the equipment that they have. It's called muscle memory. In the military, you train, you train, you train, and it's just so it's second nature. When you, when you have to pull out a weapon, it's just almost an extension of your body, and that's, that's the way these guys should be trained. Whether they're supposed to be trained once a year, I'd like them trained twice a year. If they're supposed to train five times a year, I'd like to see them trained ten times a year. I think it's extremely important for the, for the muscle memory, for the, for the, for the officers that may have to deploy a weapon, whether it's lethal or not, I think they should be able to, to be able to handle it like it's, like it's, like it's an extension of their body. Just one more thing I do want to say. I spoke to a senior officer on the force, and he said to me, when he got on, you know, an older gentleman come in and said, "You're going to be wearing a gun every day, you're a law, law officer, you know, you're taking your life into, into the hand, into your hands every time you go out on the street." And he said, he was a nineteen, twenty-year-old kid, he said, "Oh, come on, please." And he said, "I never thought I'd have to use a weapon or anything." But now, he's a seasoned officer, he's been, you know, on the force for many years, and he says, "It's totally different now." And I know it's been brought up about, you know, in the, in the newspaper, and what's going on, what happened today in Washington. And I'm not a fear monger. I don't want to sit up here and say, "Oh my, you know, the end is near," and all that. I don't want to say that, but I do want to say, in my heart of hearts, I think this is a, a long overdue project, that hopefully we can get it passed, get it open, and just have a constant turnaround of training for all the officers that are on the force now and into the future. And I appreciate you and the town manager and the chief putting your work into this and bringing it in front of us here tonight. Thank you.
No, thank you, Lou. I'm going to just take the opportunity at this moment, and of course, we're going to continue chatting about it as long as anyone wants to. But as a, as an elected member of this board and as a resident in this town, I feel compelled to, to, consistent with what Mr. Smagley just said, if there are ways for us as a community to have a higher and a more advanced, trained police force, then I feel it's incumbent upon me and my responsibility here on this board to try to provide that to the residents and to the people of Wilmington. That's our job. If we can do so in a way that is, that has no tax burden on the taxpayers, if we can do so in a way that has no negative impact on the environment, if we can do so in a way that, that provides not only the perception of, of improved security for the residents, but also bona fide, real advanced security, by virtue of that, the muscle memory and advanced training, then for me, I think it's something we had, we would, we would be, I think, I couldn't look at this information and pass it by. I believe that it's, I feel like it's incumbent upon me, as an elected member, to find a way to make, make this happen, so that your police force can be as highly trained as possible without putting any burdens on the, on the population. So, obviously, by virtue of what I just said, I'm clearly in favor of it. As I have the moment here to ask you, Chief, I guess I want to express gratitude to you. Obviously, you, you know, but I wanted to let the community know that over the course of the last couple of weeks, I wanted to familiarize myself not only with the site, but also the technology of this rubber granule trap system. And so, you were very gracious in taking some time out to bring me up to that site. Certainly, I could see the layout and the orientation of where the range would be, and it certainly makes perfect sense to me, and I was glad to see that the, the sound reports came back as not being negative. But this, this additional, for me, it was, it was valuable to visualize or see firsthand this, the staircase sort of scenario of the, the rubber trap granules. And so, I don't know if you could maybe expand on what that material is? To me, it felt like, or looked like, ground-up, like, truck tires, or car tires, that were laid in at a very heavy, dense mat, at a, at a, at an angle on, on sort of steel staircase. So, that the lead shot that comes, that goes in there, hits those rubber granules, and over time settles to the bottom of the staircase, if you will. The rubber gets taken out, and hopefully, the, the lead will be remediated once every five, ten years, or something to that effect. But there's no way for water to take that lead down into the, the atmosphere around? Is that a safe assumption?
Correct. The bullets will be in that, that rubber medium. Now, you think of the bullet trap as a closed stairwell, so to speak. So, a closed stairwell has a set of stairs, and there's walls on either side. So, that stairwell is filled up well above the tread level with a, just a crushed or a ground-up rubber material. They're about the size of a, maybe a quarter inch to a half inch by a half inch, and they're loose. So, the, the material is piled up in, and over that is draped a membrane that holds it in, and stops backsplash. As the bullet enters, it accelerates into this material. So, over time, that, that lead mass will grow, the lead that's in there. But we're told by the, the company that manufactures these lead traps is that if you pull the lead and the, and the rubber medium out, you can vacuum up relatively quickly the, the rubber granule, because it weighs a lot less than the lead, and it's put back into the trap. And then the lead, which is, if you look in your, your program there, is, is still, it might be slightly distorted, but it's still in one piece. It's not in, if you're shooting into a dirt berm or gravel berm, that piece of lead can be completely exploded in just, just, you know, multiple hundreds of fragments. And in this situation here, it comes out, might be dented or distorted a little bit, but it's still within the, the encapsulated copper shell that's in. So, you know, there's no such thing as absolutes. It's not absolute that no lead will ever go anywhere. I mean, but this is a far more advanced system. You know, I hate to think of absolutes in that, because there's always going to be some impact on anything just by showing up and doing training there. So, I can't say there'll be zero impact out there, but the lead remediation, what we've told, what we looked at, the suggestions from the EPA on best management practices suggest that this is one of the, if not the best, system that they have out there for remediation.
Thank you for that. May I ask you, one last thing that I have to ask is about the HESCO barriers, which, when we got this presentation, it was a new concept to me. Is that, so those are along the sides, I, I get the sense. Are they there for additional security of trapping the lead, or is it all, is it for sound, or both?
It's for both.
Okay.
It's for both. I mean, obviously, you know, if there was a situation where there was a misfire, an errant round, which is entirely a possibility in an uncontrolled range that does not have, you know, a, a very close instructor-to-student ratio. So, we would have probably more, no more than two police officers in training per instructor. When you're on the line, I mean, they go through a whole safety briefing, they check the weapons to make sure they're safe. Obviously, anybody that's been in any type of military or police training, safety is the most paramount, paramount aspect of the conversation. So, they're right on top of you while you're there. When you're on the line, they're right there behind you. Quite often, you can feel them with their hand on your shoulder, that they're that close to you and paying attention to everything you do. You know, and all the times that I've been training, we haven't had an issue that I'm, that I can recall. You know, it's, 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 it's a, it's a very specific and well-instructed process, so that's not just people running around with guns, and they go up in the line, and they just shoot when they feel like it. It's very, it's an instruction. And so, everything is scripted, it's choreographed, there's a whole process to it. You know, a lot of the different things we do with, with movement and cover and concealment in the process are done with every police officer off to the side, one officer with two instructors running through the obstacle, with another instructor there, and anyone who observes anything that's unsafe is required to call it out. And we have had that situation where people have said, "Excuse me, that's a problem, that might be a problem." And we looked at some, say, "Yeah, it could be," so we fixed it. You know, and so, with that level of oversight, with that level of attention to detail that's into these programs, and it's not something that, like, the officer, the training instructor's do at once. This is a plan that they've developed, that I've signed off on, that they practice before we go there, and then when we show up, they're right on top of us while we go through the process. So, it's a very controlled environment, but, you know, in these situations, layers of security is the way we look at it, layers and layers and layers of security, because anytime, you know, it's like scuba diving, you know? If you're scuba diving, and one thing goes wrong, you can probably handle that. If you're scuba diving, two things go wrong, it gets a little worse. Three things go wrong, and you're in real trouble. So, in this situation, they just keep it to the level where really nothing goes wrong, that they're right on top of you, there's a plan, there's constant instructions, and it's something that they've been doing, every training instructor has done, and you don't really hear a lot of real issues with accidents that happen in training facilities, for the most part. They have a well-developed plan.
Thank you. I, I, no more questions are popping to my head, but I want to make sure I haven't, we haven't heard from...
If I could just say, the HESCO barriers are the ones you see, like, overseas, around the camp.
Yeah.
They use those to, you know, build a barrier around the camp, but they also stop cars to, from driving through.
Okay.
They're just huge, heavy-duty sandbags, basically.
Thank you. We had, there were some pictures in our package, and I got a sense of that, but I, the description was helpful, so thank you, Lou. Mr. Newhouse?
Sure. I have a number of comments and questions. I guess I would want to start kind of at the end of the chief's presentation, where the chief had mentioned the fact that this is a, providing ample training is a, is a challenge that I, I don't think I'm overstating it to say all departments face. And, you know, both with, in the, in the presence of the manager and directly with the chief, you know, I've expressed my frustration at, at the lack of solutions that are provided on a regional or a statewide basis. And, you know, the chief has, you know, shared my thoughts with the chief, and he's certainly, you know, had, had his own thoughts on it. But I just feel as though I would be remiss in not making the point generally, that, you know, if, if every department is facing this, and the kinds of catastrophic incidents that we, that come to mind when we talk about, you know, these, the response that we need from our police officers with some of these, you know, some of these incidents that just twenty, twenty-five years ago, we just didn't really fathom would be the responsibility of a local police department, and I'm incredibly frustrated that, that there's no solution for that on a regional and statewide basis. And I know, you know, the chief and I have gone back and forth, and I don't profess to, you know, have the expertise that the chief does, but I think I'm being fair when I bottom-line the chief's position. Yeah, I don't disagree, but I'm stuck with what I'm stuck with. And, you know, and I, this is the chief now talking, I feel compelled to give a level of training that, you know, that makes me comfortable with, with my department, and I get that. But I really don't think that, that, that more long-term solution, what I consider to be a more fiscally sound solution, a fairer solution, is for us to insist that on a regional basis and a statewide basis, that, that this problem is addressed. I mean, I just, when you talk about the various objectives, and I, you know, I've talked to the chief directly, I've, I've reviewed the proposal, and I've listened again tonight, and the objectives that I hear from the chief, in so many words, are to meet the current training requirements, to enhance proficiency with weapon systems, and to develop tactical skills. And, you know, it's, it's not with any degree of criticism towards the chief, or our department, or anybody in this room, but I look at that, and I say, "Well, we're already meeting the, the requirements, whatever those requirements are." Twelve, you know, however efficient or inefficient those requirements might be, we're currently meeting them. I understand it's a daunting task for the department, as it is apparently for, for, you know, all of your colleagues out there in the different departments. I do understand the message, I think, tonight, that, that really the gist of this is not a bottom-line cost... a bottom-line cost savings, but a more protect, more productive use of $40,000 or so in overtime, really to enhance the proficiency of Wilmington police officers with, with the weapon systems. I, I get that. You know, we can talk more about what those numbers are and, and how we would expect them to play out. As a layperson, I'm still having a little trouble with this solution and how it, how it promotes the development of tactical skills. And, you know, I look to the manager's recommendations here, where he, you know, talks about these experiences that others have in schools and shopping centers and public buildings. And I, and I think of this kind of a response, I would imagine, is going to be necessary, you know, in situations where there are hostages in a public building or in a school. And I, you know, we hope none of it ever comes to pass in town. But, but we are considering this with an eye towards crises like that, right? You know, public buildings, people, innocent victims who are trapped in a building or, or on a train or on a bus or in a vehicle. And I, and I, I can certainly appreciate how some of those tactical skills can be honed in this setting. I still, you know, insist that this even isn't sufficient to do what we seem to need and what we, you know, in a worst-case scenario, we would need. So, I guess I, I just, it may take me a bit to get to this point, but I, I just feel as though we need to insist that on a regional and a statewide level, that this is addressed. And I, I know the chief has indicated that, you know, there have been conversations with the members of the legislative delegation, amongst law enforcement, amongst colleagues. And I don't, I don't disbelieve that for a moment. But I think that collectively, as a town, we need to join with other towns and as selectmen and, and as town officials. And I think we need to be more insistent on, on a longer-term solution to, to the problems that the Wilmington department and all, all the other departments face. And I, you know, I, I understand that this has been a goal in listening to the chief for some time now. You know, I've, I've been around this for a while and, and honestly, to the last couple of years, I, I didn't have a, a sense of what, the sense of urgency that is being conveyed to us. And, you know, maybe I missed the boat on something, but I'm not going to miss it tonight. And, and I, again, I think it's incumbent on us to, to talk about, you know, real, long-term solutions that are going to enable the department and similarly situated departments to meet all of those objectives that we're talking about, I think, far better than what we can do here based on this proposal. I also don't want to lose in this discussion the idea that, I think there is a cost here. And I, I hear the comments that my colleagues have made. I, you know, again, I've talked to the chief and I, I have a great deal of respect for, you know, the chief's perspective on what needs to be done. But I also think a lot of the, when we talk about high-risk and low-frequency incidents, I have to believe that, that low frequency would be even a lower frequency if we weren't experiencing the problems that we are at a local level, regional level, statewide level, a national level with drug abuse and, and, you know, the opioid epidemic that we all, I think, collectively recognize at this point. And I just think when we start to look at spending and round numbers, $150,000, I think it's fair to point out that that's funds that are available that aren't necessarily coming from the taxpayer. But I think nevertheless, those are funds that we as a town need to figure out how we use most productively. So, you know, as we look at things like this going forward and the maintenance costs, I think we have to also consider what, what are we passing up in terms of some of that preventative expenditures that maybe is going to reduce that, that frequency or the prospect of some of these incidents. So, so I guess I don't want to get, I, I think people have been very honest and candid in saying, "Look, yeah, it's about $150,000, give or take. There are some maintenance costs going forward." But I don't want to be too cavalier about the fact that that's, you know, that's $150,000. It could be spent on something else that, that may have some other preventative value. So, you know, with all of those things said, I guess I'm here and I'm hearing my colleagues and I, I, you know, hear the chief and his recommendation and the, and the town manager. And I guess I'm looking at this saying, "All right. If the town is going to move forward with this and we're going to support it, what are the kinds of things that I think we should take a good, hard look at and make sure they're part of this discussion?" And one of those things, I, one of those questions, I think, is answered by Mr. Looney's presence here and his participation in this process. But I think we, we ought to have, you know, recommendations on the record from various department heads. I think, you know, we've, we've all acknowledged the fact that this may be an environmentally sensitive area. I think that with the help of Mr. Looney and other folks at Town Hall, it, it appears as though the chief has found a, a location for this, that, you know, the town engineer at least seems comfortable that it's not going to cause any undue burden on the, on the environment. I, I think we probably ought to have the conservation administrator, you know, pen of recommendation on that. Shelley Newhouse in doing the sound testing, I, I, I got the gist of what the chief presented and I see the results here attached to this. You know, I think, I think we ought to have Shelley on, on the record with the recommendation from the, from the health department, that she doesn't see any objections to this. The other thing that I was curious about is the, I, I don't want to say cost savings, but I guess getting, maybe more bang for your buck is, is the, the better way to describe this idea of the chief being able to allocate his resources a little bit more productively, rather than sending people on a 45-minute car ride. They set up, they do their training, they break down. That whole idea of increasing the repetition and, and, you know, the, the, is it recent, recent and repetitious, whatever the, the buzz phrase is there. Are we going to be able to, and, and I don't expect the chief to be able to lay out hours necessarily, but I guess we need to think about, okay, if we're going to, we're going to get more bang for our buck by being able to assign some police officers during their regular shift to do some of this training. I certainly defer to the chief on how to allocate those resources, but we are to some extent then taking cops off the street to do that, right? So, I mean, at, at what point is the, is the break-even point in terms of the value that we're getting? You know, the, the various, the three different shifts, I would imagine we're going to have to pay some of them overtime anyways. I mean, the, the night shoot, the guys who run days aren't going to go to the night shoot as part of their shift. So, there's still some, there's still some increased costs on, on that side of things. So, I guess I want to make sure that if we're going to do this and make this expenditure, that from a labor relations standpoint, we need not be concerned about whether or not we're going to be able to implement that. And I'd be the first one to, to get behind the chief. And I believe that's the management's prerogative. This is the training we need. Here's the level of service we want to provide. And here's, you know, here's the, the, the program that we're going to follow to get there. But I guess I'd feel a little bit silly if I didn't ask the question and six months from now, we have a labor dispute over it. So, I think that's going to be something that's, that's in the mix there. I guess in the DPW superintendent, again, you know, I have no question that when the chief relates his conversations with the DPW super, that we're getting precisely what, what the understanding is. But as much as we want Chief Begonis to be around a long time, as much as everybody's sitting at this table, you know, we want to be around for a long time, the reality is that police chiefs, DPW supers, town managers and selectmen, we're not around forever. And so, I think it's important to have, you know, some written understanding between the DPW and the, and, and the police department and the town as to exactly what the parameters are, are going to be going forward. So, these are all things that I think if all of this people in this room, if we were all going to be here at some date in the future, we, we wouldn't need that. But I, you know, that's not going to be the case. So, so I think that we ought to, we ought to take the time to make sure that we do that and have some kind of written understanding, you know. I, I'm not even clear if the, I know it's the town manager's jurisdiction to manage the, the real estate of the town, appreciate the fact that we are being presented this information and, and, you know, I assume that looking at some point for a vote of support. I don't want to discourage that in any way, but at the end of the day, I think it's the, it's the manager's responsibility. So, if we're, if we're being asked to support that, it would be nice to have a, a document that we can point to to say, "This is what I supported." As opposed to, you know, 10 years from now, trying to recollect a, a conversation that we had tonight. So, so I guess, you know, I could go on forever about some of the points that I made earlier about how incumbent it is upon law enforcement and the legislative delegation and the executive branch of our state government to provide the assets that we need. That, I hear the chief saying, "When there's a, when there's an incident, your three shift people that show up are going to be the first ones that have to do some hard work and some, you know, some dangerous work." But there's going to be plenty of people that, that follow. And that is not a local problem. That's not a local situation. That's a, that's a regional and state obligation to make sure that people are properly trained and we need the resources to do it. And I think we need to continue to insist on that as a community.
Thanks, Mr. Newhouse. I, I just want to talk to that one specific point. You made, obviously, you made a number of very, very good points that give food for thought. But on this notion of, not a notion, but on this idea of a regional or, or state-sponsored or some resource that's more universally available to Wilmington and maybe, you know, our neighboring communities at a higher level of training. I, I could not agree more that that kind of a thing would give me as a resident in the region and as a, as a government official peace of mind and confidence that our law enforcement professionals have access to that level of training. But where I guess maybe you and I, I don't know if we part ways, but where I feel like I would commit to as a sitting member of this board, actively working with the town manager or with our state legislators, to conceive of and devise and write some type of a program or a plan, create a collaborative with some of our neighboring communities, fellow chairs or, or committee heads within other communities to explore what can be done. But I think you might, you may agree that the wheels of these things sometimes move slowly and momentum can be achieved and then kind of lost. And I'm not personally, I love the idea of going in that direction, but not in lieu of going in this direction. So, I think there's still merit to the idea of having a resource today or as, as soon as fall, per what the chief was saying a little while ago. Let's work with what we have. Let's advance our, our local training and concurrently, on, on a, on the same track, start to build some consensus and some collaboration with the region and with our state legislators. And maybe we can find some funding or some grants or get a bill put up before the, on the State House. So, I, I think you have a great idea, but I'm not ready to forego this proposal in favor of that. I, that's my reaction to that. But, and I, again, I don't want to dominate conversation. I certainly want to give Ms. O'Connell's any opportunity she may want to have to, to speak or the chief to respond to anything that he might have heard.
If, if I might, you know, I just took a couple of notes on, on what Selectman Newhouse had, had discussed. And, and some of those things are also, you know, obviously possibilities or issues. I have spoken with Senator Tyre relative to a regional range or development of ranges, and it's something that to this day has not been proposed. You know, so part of the difficulty of it is, is, you know, I, I, I don't mean this to be disrespectful, but would Wilmington be the location we would suggest for a regional range? And I guess I ask that question because that's the question that's going to be asked of every, every other community that we would be asking to partner with. Is my town going to be the town that's going to get this? And they all have their concerns. We see the issues in, in Bill Rica with the sheriff's department trying to expand the property that he has there, and that's an existing jail. And it's met with a lot of resistance from the community. And there's, there's a lot of work they have to do to develop any needs that they have there with their existing site. So, you know, I, I guess at the end of the day, you know, a, a regional site that maintained a facility for training for five departments might be doable. I think if you had a site that was a regional site and it was, it was there to maintain, you know, the city of Lowell, the city of Cambridge, the city of Somerville, Wilmington, you know, and various, you know, 15, 20 other communities, that there just isn't enough training time in the day to satisfy all those needs, even at the 12 hours that we did previously. And we're looking to increase it to 24. So, you know, if you just, you know, from that perspective, I, I think it's difficult. And I, and I share the frustration, you know. We don't get a lot of support from the state government, the federal government in a lot of ways. I mean, a lot of programs that were out there before have, have been rolled back. You know, when you talk about the, the drug abuse problem in town, I, I would suggest that that's really not our issue with violence. Violent crime comes primarily, what we're seeing, from mental health. And although there's an urgency to do something about substance abuse, there is no urgency anywhere to do anything about mental health. They talk about it every day. Every active shooter or active killer in every situation usually comes down to some type of mental health issue, some grievance, some, some perception that they have that they're not able to, to, to equalize within society and they act out in such ways. You know, I, I just don't see that happen. A majority of what we do in the police department when we're going to call for service is, is out of a mental health issue. It's a source of great frustration for us, but something that although they can give us a four-hour block in training on how to deal with somebody that has a mental illness or a learning disability, the reality of it is, is when you show up, you, you take it as it comes. You know what I mean? The generalities that they give you still don't prepare you for that, for that level of response. In these situations here, you know, as far as regional teams go, SWAT teams, I happen to be a, a command chief of one. You know, I suggest a very well-developed one, a very highly-trained one, a very proficient one. But there's a real time lapse by the time a regional team responds to your community. So, if, if it's 15 or 20 minutes, that's a lot of potential for death and, and tragic, tragedy to occur in that interim. That's why the new plan, the new design is to send the local police officers in. So, we would send a team of three to four police officers in. The next wave of responses from our contiguous communities, they would come next to provide assistance. The SWAT team and those higher-level teams with the, with the special training would come in on and after. And, you know, I guess at that point, that's, that's not, that's not what their, the police discussion is about right now. Those folks have a place. But for this type of active shooter response, it takes, you know, anywhere up to, you know, nationally, five minutes or so to get to a response. And it's usually over very shortly after when the team of police officers engage whatever threat is in there. However, they decide the outcome's going to be, whether they're going to engage the police officers or take their own life, it usually ends very shortly after those officers respond. At the end of the day, you're still sending police officers into a situation where they have very little training and very little experience at. So, you know, I, I think that mental illness is our biggest issue and, and obviously is not being addressed well. As far as the union situation, training is not a negotiable item. It's something that I can mandate that you go. If you took a special weapon system like a taser, the union might make the argument that that new taser, when I implement that new taser, that there's a change of working conditions. But all of this, training, firearms training, all that, I can increase it and decrease it as we see fit, hold it whatever time of year we decide, and there's no union issue with that. The, currently, right now... currently, right now, with the shifts, we break training out through our in-service over the course of eight, nine, 10 months. And so what we do is we, we take officers on heavy shifts and we assign them to go to training. So they're a midnight guy, you're in training next week. So they leave the midnight shift to go to training. They don't get paid overtime. They don't get anything special for that. They just get the midnight off and they go to training. That's a normal adjustment that we have. If the shift falls below capacity, we might have to fill that. But we save a lot of money with this process. And I think that although we wouldn't do specifically what we do with that, because we're going to have to get a couple of officers there, there is savings to be had in this style of pulling one midnight guy off, putting him with two or three daytime officers, which is our heaviest shift, and a four to 12 guy and try to mitigate that. It's not going to eliminate overtime in any way, shape or form, but it can be, it can be reduced and mitigated. That's why we believe, and the deputy and I rolled out the numbers, we can probably do the 12 hour, the 24-hour training for the same budget that we act, we already put towards this training here. So you're doubling training for roughly the same amount of money. We believe we can do that. Now, the proof's in the pudding. If, if I have, if I'm down three officers in the department, that makes that mission a lot more difficult to achieve. It's just reality. And I can't control the ebb and flow of staffing in the police department. But certainly, it's something that we, we believe that we, we have a plan for. And if things work out, you know, we think it'll be successful. So, another issue is the sense of urgency. This is not something that I brought up two years ago. This is something I've been talking about with the previous town manager. I've had multiple conversations with him. I've had multiple conversations with, with Jeff. The difference here is that, I guess, there's now an interest to have the conversation. But I have spread this conversation since day one, and I'm sure Jeff can confirm that. This is one of the things that I spoke to him about when he first became town manager. It's something I had multiple conversations with Mr. Kyra about. I've had this plan or this desire since the day I took over as chief, because I had it as a lieutenant, I had it as a sergeant, I had it as a patrolman. I've always understood that we needed to be better and more proficient at what we do. So, you know, forfeiture funds, I, I think that, you know, over the large scale with the amount of money that we've spent in traveling back and forth to a range that we don't own, limiting our ability to schedule, limiting our ability to, to get the desired amount of training time on there, I think we probably spent a lot more funds from the town's general fund or from the town's allotment to the police department. And over the years that if we had this range, we probably would never would have had to have spent. So I think that, you know, in the past, we've spent a lot of money on this old system of way we trained. And I think there's, there's movement to, you know, with this capital outlay and this new plan towards enhancing training and reducing the overall impact of that financially in the town. So, when I look at it, I see it just slightly different. You know, I mean, I do respect every penny that we spend in the police department. I do have a, a keen awareness of how to, how to best, how we feel we best deploy it when the time comes. And I think that the town will definitely get their bang for their buck with this process. And then if they decide, I mean, 10, 15 years from now, they do a regional system, I mean, I don't see it. We've had a lot of conversation amongst police chiefs. It's just not something that really has come to fruition. There have been departments that have looked at it, and for whatever reason, their, their departments have decided against it. So, with that said, I just don't, you know, I think those are valid points, but I just don't see them ever coming to fruition for us. And if we were to wait, I think that's quite, you know, my issue with that. I just don't want to wait. Respectfully.
If I, if I could, just in response to some of those comments, so I've always considered myself a pragmatist and a realist. And, you know, I, I'm not, I don't view an effort to, you know, bring a regional solution as a pie in the sky kind of a alternative. And I know you're not suggesting that it is. But I just want to acknowledge that I understand your, your level of information, your sense of what's doable and not doable as a police chief. I, I get it and I respect that. But I think, you know, and I don't doubt that since you became the chief, this has been a, a priority. I'm not doubting that at all. What I'm saying is that as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I certainly haven't been focused on this going back to 2005. So, you know, I guess that's something we should focus on. And in the meantime, if the town is going to take this direction and, and move towards something like this, I'll be darned if other towns get to use it. I mean, other than on a, an emergency basis, I know I've talked to, to the manager, but, you know, if the, if, you know, if a regional solution is not in the cards and, you know, other cities and towns, and to, to the chairman's point earlier about, you know, trying to, to get that process going, the reality is it's all about money. It's finding a place and it's spending the money to build it and maintain it. And, you know, if, if the other, if there are other towns who don't have that appetite, well, the heck with them. I mean, if, if, you know, if the town's going to go this direction, this, this should be a talent resource, period, you know. So, you know, I, I don't, some of the, some of the comments that you made, chief, I think are helpful and, you know, they, they clarify some things that I appreciate. But even in terms of, you know, the, the mental health issue, again, you know, with this, let's recognize that we are spending funds that might be otherwise available to prevent some problems. And that's something that I think we need to be aware of and need to, you know, level with people, that this is a decision like many things in government about how to allocate the resources that are available. And, and you, you prompted me to think of another question, chief, is going forward, it's my sense that the, that the maintenance cost of this is not significant. You know, it's not a, it's not a number that would shock us. But, you know, is it, is it four digits, five digits? What are we, what are we looking at for annual maintenance? Because I'm wondering, is this going to be a DPW cost going forward, a police department cost, the equitable funds? How do you envision that happening over time?
The, the maintenance on the trap is relatively simple. It's, it's, you know, the inspection, my, my special order designs a plan where the training division has to develop a checklist and that they will inspect the bullet trap before and after every training. That includes the depth of the lead shot, all of those things that could be a concern to see when it's going to be, need to be emptied. The best estimate that we have right now for the amount of round count that we would put into it, they say it would be between five and 10 years where it would have to be mitigated. And at this point, it's, it's $600 per range. We estimate roughly about $3,600 for the lead removal. With, that's with a professional company that will do all of the things we talked about that follow the best manner of practice, practice of the EPA. So, you know, I, I think that, that, you know, it's, I certainly don't say it's cheap, but I, I think it's relatively in the grand scheme of, you know, a $5 million police budget, that it's, it's, it's not that excessive in that process. And that's the blessing. If you were to shoot that into a dirt berm, it's going to cost you a lot more. So less money upfront, more money in remediation later on. This is more money upfront, less money in remediation, and the fact that you don't have the impact on the environment with the busted-up lead shot that goes in there. So, I mean, that, you know, a lot of risks.
Mike, I don't want to shut you up, but I want to make sure I give Ms. O'Connell an opportunity. And we'll certainly, we'll keep it open as long as people want to speak. So Judy, if you please.
Sure. I just want to state upfront that I, I took a step back with this when it had gotten brought up before, because I needed to see if I had a potential conflict of interest relative to my real estate practice in town. So I did speak with town council, and I also did speak with the state ethics commission, and I did file a disclosure with the town clerk's office, which is on file. So, obviously, all, a lot of the questions, I've taken in all the information that's been stated tonight. You know, obviously, I've had conversations with you, chief, in that, you know, I want to be supportive of you and your department and see that you have the highest-trained officers, you know, in this community and of high quality that you can be proud of and that we can feel safe. Obviously, with a proposal, you want to, you know, dot all your i's, cross all your t's, and that, you know, as members of this board, having said all of that, we want to make sure that this is a comprehensive proposal that, you know, in endorsing it or not endorsing it, that we can feel that we've asked all the pertinent questions. And it's certainly not meant to insult you, already a member of the department, to your level of management or professionalism, but it's simply to say that for something like this, the level of security and liability and cost and infrastructure and what this means for the town of Wilmington and for the public in general, it's meant to train officers to help serve and protect the community. But, you know, it could be considered a noise nuisance. I'm not saying that it is, but things environmentally, cost-wise, things of that nature, that as a sitting member of the Board of Selectmen, I need to look at the downside of things, too. And there was a previous range, and I understand that you weren't the chief back then, and I'm not being negative towards any other prior chief, but let's just say things didn't go according to plan. And, you know, I have every faith that you'll run a very tight ship. But, you know, as other selectmen have stated, we all may not be in these positions forever for whatever reasons. So, I do think that very strict policies and procedures need to be in place. I do agree with Mr. Newhouse's suggestion about having a real firm set of documentation that memorializes this whole endeavor and what the recommendations are from the various departments, understanding, you know, how this training facility is going to be used in every way, shape or form, and see that that's memorialized. I do have a question. I hear the Wilmington department only. Is NMLA going to be part of this? Has that been?
No.
Okay.
My suggestion to tell me, Angela, how was that no other department would use this. We had the conversation about other departments and, and specific needs. And my suggestion is that I didn't think that that was prudent. Certainly can something that, you know, can be discussed later on, but I just think that this is something critical to Wilmington at this point.
Okay. So, so just, you know, obviously, the hours, the policy procedures, you know, schedule of usage, we talked about it. I've expressed to you concerns, just understanding that this is going to be department-regulated, that it would be department firearms, that there wouldn't be any personal usage, and that just, you know, certain code of conduct would be there. And I don't want to be insulted by those lines of questions, but, you know, it's important to me that, that that's taken into consideration. You know, some of the budgetary pieces and even just some of the other comments about the membership, I really was looking to see that, you know, in creating this, there was going to be the tremendous upside to doing it. I mean, obviously, you, you've spent all this time and effort, you know, to have 12 hours, just, you know, go to 14 or go to, you know, something slightly above with what you're getting. I'm not saying it's not worth the trouble of doing it, because training your offices is, is paramount. But I think this whole endeavor has to, has to equate to training upside. And so, you know, I, I do see all the training that you have here. I am cognizant of the, of the budgets, and I, I do see that you indicated that it would probably be relatively the same and potentially less. So, you know, on the flip side, I know you could have the comment that, could you really put a price on training if it's your offices and how they're serving and protecting the community? But that's a specific area that I'd like to continue to get, you know, assuming if this gets passed, that we would get some consistent feedback as to how things are going, what type of training that you've been able to accomplish as a result of it. So, separate from today's conversation, just periodically, if we can start to see kind of return on investment, if you will, in some future reporting, you know, and I don't want to get ahead of ourselves because we haven't taken a vote, but that this conversation doesn't stop here, is my point.
I agree with you.
And to kind of, you know, just from a reporting standpoint, whether it's safety concerns, how you feel that your department's been enhanced by this, you know, kind of a dashboard, if you will, as to how the evolution of this has benefited your department or not. And, you know, what are the strengths, opportunities, weaknesses, things like that. So, I think, you know, those, I'm hitting really the highlights. I could, I could dive into any one thing, but I, I really feel that a lot has already been covered. So I don't want to be redundant just to have it come from my voice. But do understand that I'm, I'm taking, you know, I do think Mike's point about the regional level is, is, is very well-placed. But, you know, not speaking for you, but what I'm sensing from you is that you need to do something in the meantime, and you feel that you have an urgent situation that needs to be addressed now. And although you may be supportive of, of regional concept to some degree, I'm not, you know, saying that for sure, but you need to do something in the meantime to cover your department. And so I do understand that. I'm curious, you know, as a side note, and I don't know that anyone in this room has the answers, but, you know, we have Hanski May for space, we have military locations. I'm wondering if we could look at places like that, that might be a regional facility that doesn't necessarily come under the jurisdiction of any one city or town, but has a, a military component at a state level that could be tapped into. That's just one idea. So, I'll wrap it up with that. I do think that the department head recommendations is, is really something that, that I would really like to see. And certainly, you know, I don't know what the direction is going forward from here. Is the intent to take a vote tonight? Are you going to be tabling this until our next meeting to take a vote of the board? If someone can give me some indication of where you think we're going to go from here, that would be helpful.
I think it's the pleasure of the board, frankly. You know, whatever the, a majority would like to do. I, I wanted, I don't want to let it slip away. I, I personally, my feeling is that I want to strike while the iron's hot, for lack of a better word. I would like to continue to push the ball forward. Now, in what manner does that take, I don't know. I, I heard very clearly, and I, and I agree with personally, that a more formal, scripted policy that the future chief and future town manager and future Board of Selectmen can have as the straw man or the, or the, the template for the use and the interaction of how, how the, the chief and the director of DPW and all the other folks that come after us can, can use as a guideline for what the spirit of this, this discussion and ultimately, hopefully, a vote is about. I think that's worthwhile to have. I also believe that it's worthwhile to have codified and written into the record recommendations from the, from the department heads that, that were, that were described. So, those are, I think, meaningful and worthwhile documents to pursue and create. So I don't know if there's a means or a way to move the ball forward this evening with a contingency that those, those things be put in place. Or is it unrealistic to believe that those things could be put in place in the next two weeks or whatever it is until our next meeting? I'd like for this board to take a vote. Whether that, whether the board takes a vote this evening or at, at our next meeting, you know, we can, we can decide here collectively where, where a board of five that could get to make majority votes. So, but I, I don't want to negate the possibility that, that someone would want to, you know, make a motion or, or table it for, for those purposes. Jeff, you seem to want to say something?
Yeah, just, Mr. Chairman, in terms of some of the points that have been raised via this discussion, with regard to obtaining recommendations from individual department heads, that's certainly something that I can do. As the chief has indicated, this has not been a solo effort on the part of the chief or myself. There have been a number of departments that have been involved in the discussions about how to achieve this in a, as minimal an environmental impact as possible. So I'm confident I can have recommendations from the individual departments. In terms of developing some type of memorandum of understanding or a policy, or, or at least a memorandum of understanding that kind of lays out what the expectations are, I think that is also something that, that we can do. With regard to the discussion about regionalizing this type of operation, if you will, I also agree that it would be far more, depending upon the size, and the chief referenced this, I think there's, there's certain limits to how, how many communities you can have involved in a, a range like this. But certainly, having a, a regional option, I think, would be far more effective and efficient if, if it's done at the right scale. You know, I, I would only point out that, you know, we had three years ago, a catastrophic event with the Marathon bombing. And in my estimation, if that wasn't enough to shock the system, if you will, into, you know, looking at this issue more seriously of providing appropriate training for local law enforcement, I'm not really sure what does. And, and, you know, I think the reality is there are many competing needs at the state level, certainly at the federal level. And, you know, for any number of reasons, this has not risen to the top of the list. That's not to say we shouldn't pursue the regional effort, continue to pursue it regardless of the outcome of any vote on this matter. I think if it can be done at the right scale, it, it makes a lot of sense. But I think I would share the chief's view that it's, I don't see in the foreseeable future that we are going to get any kind of future that we are going to get any kind of legislative assistance to develop these kinds of regional firing ranges that would be, you know, something that we certainly could use. So I think it's prudent in the meantime to pursue this. I also recognize the point that there's no question, $150,000 is a significant amount of money, whether or not it comes from the tax levy. That money, you know, there's an opportunity cost, so to speak, you know, in terms of what could those funds be used for if they are not used for this range? And, you know, there's certainly things that I would expect the chief could earmark those funds for that are, you know, legitimate expenses. But, you know, I think, I've come to the conclusion that this is something that we really need to be attentive to, which is the enhancement of the skillset of using weapons within the police department. It's, you know, there's no question that it's not something that's done frequently, and thank goodness for that. But, you know, when officers are called upon and decisions have to be made in real time, I just want to be able to have some measure of assurance that I've taken steps to create the opportunities for these officers to be trained to the extent that they can be, to be as comfortable and proficient and accurate as they can be. So, but we can provide follow-up if that's the will of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to talk for a motion, and I don't have an issue if somebody wants to tweak it, you know? I'd be happy to do that if you'd want to hear a motion.
I do, Mike. What I wanted to say was that my feeling on this is, I get the sense, and I have no idea, well, I shouldn't say I have no idea, but I get the sense, and I think as we've sort of all had our opportunity to chat, I think we know where we all probably would vote if we were forced to take a vote right now. So, you know, it seems like we probably have enough support for this that we could push it forward. I don't want to win. This is too important of a discussion to just prevail and move forward. I would prefer that we, if we do move forward with this proposal, that we do so. If we can't get 100% unanimous agreement, that we at least address some of the concerns that were raised by, you know, some of the folks at the table. So if we can make it as palatable as possible to even those folks that maybe aren't inclined to give it a yes vote, but at least it covers some of those concerns, I'd be of the mind to try to include those and meet those conditions. And I think they're good conditions, frankly. But, so I guess I say that out of respect for all of my colleagues here at this table. This, to me, is an important enough issue that I would love to get unanimous approval, but if I can't, if we can't have unanimous approval on this issue, I would at least like for it to be something that doesn't give anybody on this board a bitter taste as we take the vote. So I just put that on the table there, and did you want to speak? I'm sorry.
Sure, to that point, I don't want to, if Mr. McCoy wants to offer a motion, then there's a second, and there's a discussion, that's fine, or do you mind if I jump in, Mike?
Absolutely.
You know, we vote on common victuals licenses, and we won't take a vote unless we have a recommendation from the building inspector and the health director. We've issued pouring licenses for a winery that was desperate to open its doors, and I think it took us three meetings, all for good reasons, because it was a fairly unique precedent that we were setting. We just wanted to make sure we had it right. And I'm trying to remember other examples of what this board has done. I believe the farmer's market, which has been, I think by most accounts, very successful. I know that I had concerns about that particular use in that particular site. I think in the end, I supported it because some of those concerns were addressed, if I remember right. But in any event, I think it took at least a couple of meetings to hammer that out. You know, we're hearing about a priority of the chief's for, you know, for as long as he's been the chief, and, you know, and this is important. And obviously, nothing is more important than public safety. So, you know, to that point, I'm hopeful, I hear, you know, I hear the same things that the chairman does and where people are coming from. I hear the town manager saying that he can get those recommendations done for our next meeting. You know, when I talk about a memorandum of understanding, I'm not talking about a 20-page document, I'm talking about a couple of pages that talk about what the intent is here and what the conditions are. So I would just respectfully request one more meeting to get those things, and, you know, I'd gladly participate in that vote and come to a decision at the next meeting. And I'm not looking to prolong this process, but I, and then in terms of the public process too, I think there is some value here. We have a, you know, a public presentation, the chief, you know, spends, I think, an hour with a very thorough presentation. We spend, geez, another hour and 45 minutes answering questions, and I certainly appreciate the chief's time and expertise. I don't, in terms of the public process, I don't think that's unreasonable to put that off till, you know, for one meeting, a couple of weeks down the road, whatever that date is. And, you know, and frankly, you know, have an opportunity to hopefully support it with some of those conditions. So I just respectfully ask for that.
I think that, frankly, I agree with you, Mike.
Let me just say, no, I respect what Mr. Newhouse has to say, and I know we sat here close to two hours listening to the chief, and I do support the recommendation of the chief. I heard the town manager, and I know sometime, you know, we're the executive board, I'm saying this, and the buck stops right here when we have to make a decision relative to this, and I think this is important. And I do respect the board of health director and the building inspector, but I don't see the merit in asking them to see if they support it. I think we were looking at an old site, and we took the consideration of the conservation commission to move it on the other side so we wouldn't be encroaching in the wetlands. So I think we've been proactive. And I was, I just offered the motion, and I'm listening to what you said, Mr. Newhouse, I believe that we should have some type of written policy. And I was just going to make a motion that I move to grant the firearms training facility to the Wilmington Police Department and have the town manager implement a written policy. I was thinking that maybe that would cover our discussion, but, you know, I mean, if you folks want to wait for another meeting, so be it, but, you know, I don't have an issue going forward with it now, right now, at the second. You know, so if somebody wants a second for discussion, that would be fine, if not, whatever.
I would like to second that discussion. And with all due respect, and everything has been set up here, I don't think that I've ever voted for anything on this board to win or lose, you know what I'm saying? I think everybody up here has expressed their concerns. Would I know that they believe in their heart which is best for the town? I think the program that's been put together, and it's gone through the, you know, public meeting, it's been posted and all that stuff, and like Selectman McCoy just said, we have a department that came and said, well, maybe it's better if we moved it up here a little bit, and it would alleviate some of the other issues as far as the environment goes. I trust the town manager to be able to put basically what the chief has given us here tonight as far as the training, the hours, the, yeah, the hours of operation, the signage, the red flag when the range is hot, all that, very important stuff, to be able to put something like that together. So if down the road, the chief does come and say, hey, we do want NMLAC to train, or Redding, or somebody else, it's not in the rules, it's just not the way it's written up. And maybe that'll be another board down the road that do want to have to deal with that. I think the written approvals or recommendations from the other departments, that's also a good idea. But I think if, you know, we're going to sit here and talk about this again in two weeks, and I'm all for the mindset to take a vote, there was a motion, I think if we had said that the town manager can put some of these things to writing, an agreement, if you will, with restrictions on the range, who can use it, when we can use it, the signage, when it's got to go hot, and, you know, with the DPW and all that, I think that would be fine. He could also, you know, put in there that the pending positive recommendations from all the other department heads that we normally get recommendations to that are applicable. Like, I don't think you're going to need a favorable recommendation from all the boards, I think. I don't think all the departments, I'm not sure which ones would be applicable here, but.
Better than that?
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, we have a motion that's been made, and you've seconded it and started the discussion, so thank you. And I don't want to stop your discussion, but I want to make sure we recognize that a motion has been made and seconded. And so we are in the discussion phase now of that.
I'm jumping on that if I may.
Please, please.
Because I don't want to be taken out of context, but it sounds to me like, you know, you're garnering enough support to get this proposal. I think a sitting selectman has made comments about how we've taken previous votes. The same composition of this board will be here for the next meeting. I think we need to kind of step back and say that how does this board traditionally conduct business? And any other proposal, whether it was trash or anything else, you know, just as one example, people would want that second meeting, and that's how we typically have conducted business. So you have a sense of support, and you're moving in the right direction. I just don't want to see us take steps back over, you know, I would be in favor of the proposal, but now if I'm going to be asked to take a vote when I have a sitting selectman and that I fundamentally agree with the request that should be in place, and this proposal, you know, this isn't going to be constructed until the fall, I don't think you want to take the risk of having someone sitting here that may vote differently now because they fundamentally agree with the principle of the documents that were requested to take the vote. Does that make sense?
To me, it does. I understand what you said.
So I don't know that you want to go down this road to try and just put things in the fast lane when I don't see how things are going to deteriorate in terms of putting this plan forward that to, you know, to the next meeting is only going to enhance this discussion and bring us collectively together as a team to bring this forward for the town. And I think there's merit in not losing our fundamental principles as to how this board traditionally conducts business. I just don't see the reason to not give a sitting member, you know, a request, whether it's myself or two people or one person, if they feel more comfortable in asking for that to be tabled, I think you should consider that if you're pushing for a unanimous vote. That's my opinion.
I feel, and I'm going to ask for some assistance parliament or parliamentarily, I think, here, because I appreciate your observations. I'll be candid with you, I'm inclined to wait until April 11th to allow the manager to get us the recommendations and for some type of memorandum of understanding, as we've been calling it this evening, to be formulated. Because frankly, I would like to have Mr. Newhouse and yourself with us and have a positive vote on this. But we have a motion that's made. So if hypothetically, I call for a vote in a moment, and I vote not to approve Mr. McCoy's motion, can we then take up a second motion? Can I then, or can someone make a motion that we table this discussion and take it up again in two weeks with the documents requested? And then, and here, I don't think we need to go through this presentation again in two weeks. I think we've had the presentation. We, in my mind, all we really need to do is look at the new documents, feel that we have had these concerns addressed, and take a new vote. But I don't want to take a vote this evening and have us not be able to take this up again, is what I'm concerned about. So I'm asking that question because that will dictate how I vote.
My opinion is there's no reason why you can't have a board to consider item at the next selectman's meeting. You know, if this, if a majority of the board votes against the motion that's been offered, there's no reason why when that information is made available in the next two weeks, we come in on the 11th on a board to consider item and take a vote. I mean, that...
So it's either that or I would humbly request, and it's completely up to you, Mr. McCoy, but if you've heard all the commentary that others and I have made, if you'd be receptive to holding off for two weeks, that's fine. If not, I'll call for the vote in a moment. It's your call.
I'm not trying to look into a tug-of-war with my colleagues. I didn't see that as an issue. I thought it was a concern about written policy. That's why I didn't just give a con plance and tell the chief, yeah, go ahead and do it tomorrow. I'm letting, you know, Jeff come up with a written policy that I thought it struck me with many of the folks. And I respect the building inspector and Shelley Newhouse, who does a great fantastic job. And, you know, I just look at it differently that, you know, we're an executive board, we're looking for, the chief is looking for permission to do it by this board. I don't really see, you know, by the yea and nay, that it reflects on how I vote on this. I mean, common victual license, liquor license, you know, we've asked for input on those type of license that are within the zoning bylaws, you know? You know, if somebody could say, well, is this within the zoning bylaw? I don't know if this is within the zoning bylaw. It's something coming before the executive board, and I don't have a problem just saying it right now that I do support it, you know? So I'm not looking to get on bad sides of colleagues, but I have no issue going forward with the motion and as stated. I just don't see us waiting two more weeks to, just to hear from the building inspector and the health board out that we support it, then we take the vote then. I just don't see that in this particular instance. Everything else we talked about, relative to zoning articles and relative to, you know, our town meeting bylaws, you know, and that have been in the town for many, many years.
Mr. Chair, I would just suggest, you know, I'm certainly not looking to, you know, create a divided board. If, I don't believe that, you know, with all due respect to Selectman McCoy and Selectman Smaglia, that there's any harm in waiting the two weeks. The sense I have just from listening is that there's a desire amongst some board members, and I would say all board members, to have kind of a measure of assurance, if you will, that there's a document that can be presented to the full board that memorializes the intent going forward so that whether it's five years down the line or 10 years down the line, you know, these are the rules of the game, so to speak. And also to get a, have an understanding from the other participating department heads as to where they stand on this issue. So, I mean, from my perspective, and I certainly don't want to speak for the chief, but, you know, I don't see it as being problematic if the, if it's the will of the board or the desire of the board to table this. And then in the interim, you know, I will have the conversations with those department heads that have been involved and direct them to provide their respective recommendations and also develop a memorandum of understanding that establishes, addresses some of the things we've talked about in terms of hours of use, protocols for access to the facility and the various points that have been discussed tonight.
Let me just say something about, 40 minutes ago, Jeff, I heard you say something else, but I got to be totally honest, I want to push the vote. Unfortunately, you played to the majority, and I can imagine come May, you're going to be playing to that new majority as well. I made a motion, and if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. You know, so sometimes you've got to stick by your guns a little bit here, Jeff.
With all due respect, I'm sticking by my guns in that I support the recommendation to reestablish this range at Abigail Island. What I'm simply suggesting is, I don't believe it's imperative that the vote be taken tonight. If it, you know, if the vote happens tonight, that's fine. If the vote, if it's the will of the board to wait for two weeks, I don't think that's going to fundamentally be damaging to this whole process. But long and the short of it is, my recommendation is, as it has been, that this range be established for use by Wilmington police personnel.
So we have a motion on the table that has in it the condition that these documents that we've referred to, the letters of recommendation... that we've referred to, the letters of recommendation from department heads, as well as a memorandum of understanding. The motion has in it the condition that those documents be put in place after this vote is taken. So, that doesn't preclude us in the future from hypothetically, another motion being made and voted on that doesn't have that condition in it, because it would be ipso facto a different motion. Is that fair to say? Okay. So, I have a motion on the table, I have a second. We've had discussion. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, just to be clear, I mean, I know things are starting to get contentious, but I just, I'm struggling to see the urgency that this has to be done tonight. And I'm struggling, I understand Michael's, McCoy's position that the recommendations wouldn't change his vote, but I'm struggling if there's a request as a professional courtesy that isn't going to be granted, and then you potentially have people that would have supported something that, in principle, are not going to support something because they've asked for something that they're not going to be given, and they're being forced to take a vote because it's being called for, which is well within your rights. I'm just surprised that, you know, sticking to your guns is really what's in the best interest of trying to put this proposal forward, if you're looking for a majority vote from the board. I'm just not, I'm just not understanding the critical urgency that this has to be decided tonight. And I, is this going to change, you know, policing in the town of Wilmington between now and April 11th? I would certainly, you know, welcome the chief's comment on that. I don't want to spot him on that, but I think that business as usual will still continue between now and then, and I just, I just don't understand how we are getting to this point, that we're starting to become divided on an issue that we really, who were collaborating well together. This has gone sideways, and I'm just surprised.
May I ask you, I want to make sure I understood, I'm pursuing a unanimous vote. I'm pursuing consensus. But I, and I frankly, I'd prefer not to have to vote this evening, but I feel like I'm compelled to take, to ask for a vote. Am I not...
It's fine. I just, I came here to support this, but I'm not going to be...
No, but I'm saying I'm compelled by statute. I'm not, it's not my internal comp...
No, I'm just making a general statement that, you know, I think to push something that could, by, you know, digging in, could potentially be detrimental to the outcome. I just think it's not keeping your eye on the prize, but it's fine.
Well, I certainly, I think I understand what you're saying, Judy. At the end of the day, I agree with you, but nevertheless, we are in, we are where we are. So, we have a motion, and we have a second on that motion. And it's my job, sitting in the middle of this table, to try to wrestle with how we take that vote, and I think we have to take it. So, I just wanted to make sure that it didn't close a door on anything, and I'm hearing fairly loud and clear that it doesn't close any doors. It just props it open until some future time when this door gets cranked back open again, and it's my intent that that door will be wide open on the 11th. So, I'm going to ask for the vote, and then at the end of that vote, irrespective of how it goes, I have some more commentary to make. So, we have a motion made with a contingency or a condition that the documents be put in place after the vote is taken, if it's successful. And we have a second. So, all in favor of that motion? Two. Opposed. Three. Motion does not pass. I would like to ask, and I think I have the authority as the chair, I would like to ask the town manager to do as he suggested he could do, which is to formulate, I imagine with assistance of the chief and anyone else that needs to be engaged, a memorandum of understanding, or some other document that codifies and memorializes the rules and usage of this site and the intent and the spirit of what we're trying to achieve here. And I think, I think we know what we're trying to achieve by virtue of the conversation and the proposal. Additionally, I think, no, I think, I would also ask the manager to secure written recommendations from all the applicable department heads, and have those documents to us in as expeditious and complete a time as possible, and so that we can, as we start to formulate and put together the agenda for our April 11th meeting, we can decide how to, how and in what format we take that up again. Is that okay with my colleagues? Thank you. Chief, incredibly valuable information. Thank you for your time, both in the presentation of the information, as well as being here to answer some questions for us all. And we'll get there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, that concludes our appointments for this evening, which jumps us down into communications, at which point I will turn it over to the town manager to review their communications for us.
The first communication is received from Dan Deutsch from town council's office. The letter is directed to the Surface Transportation Board, and part of the intent here is a response to a March 1st Surface Transportation order confirming that the town's response to an EPA letter from November of 2015, that those comments went to the revised service list, mailing list of intended respondents. It's addressing the EPA's November 11th, 2015 comment letter regarding the New England Transrail proposal. Just by way of information, the town's letter agrees with EPA's call for an environmental impact study as opposed to an environmental assessment regarding the New England Transrail proposal. It calls for the Surface Transportation Board to defer on any review of New England Transrail's development until a record of decision has been issued by EPA. It also notes that EPA's comfort letter that was issued back a number of months ago is not an endorsement of NET's project. It notes also that NET's plans are vague, do not confirm the scope and nature of the development, and go so far as not even including specific plans for the development. Next correspondence is, similar correspondence from DEP, again, addressing the same issue. This is to the Surface Transportation Board, written for the same purpose as was the town's letter. Also calls on NET to issue detailed development plans for the site, including engineering drawings and building locations, amounts and types of material to be brought to the site, and the type of processing to be conducted. We have correspondence from Wilmington Environmental Restoration Committee. This also is directed to the Surface Transportation Board, and they also offer a number of comments, some similar to those issued by the town, raising concerns about the NET's proposal. We have correspondence, this is a memorandum from me to the board, just informing the board about the status of the traffic signals at Glen Road and Middlesex. Essentially, the Public Works Director has been in communication with the contractor, MDR Construction, and has been told that it's going to be about six weeks before the lights will be placed in a flashing mode, if you will. They'll be in that mode for about 30 days, which is a test mode, and then after that, the lights will be fully functional, and that's all, of course, subject to weather, assuming we don't get any more storms.
Mr. Chairman, through you to the manager, if I may, just a quick question on that. I don't mean to spot you with this question, Jeff, but what decides the six weeks? I mean, you know, this isn't directed at you, but I've been looking at them for a while, and I'm just waiting for them to turn on. So, who decides that timeline? And I'm just trying to seek to understand, and if you don't have a full answer, I understand, but I'm just curious, why six weeks from now?
Yeah, I would suspect it really, in large measure, rests with the contractor. So, the contractor, MDR, their agreement is with the Mass DOT, and they're obligated to have the project completed by the end of this calendar year. So, you know, they're technically within their rights, as far as I understand it, to complete the work anytime between now and November or December. I suspect, and I, you know, I could confirm this with Mike Woods, that it's an issue of the other projects that they have going, and that, you know, they'll come back to this one as they wrap up other projects. But again, that's somewhat speculative.
Okay, thanks.
I've had the same observation, Judy. It's, you drive through there, and it's like, just turn them on. You know, there they are. It's a bit frustrating.
I don't mean to sound critical, it's just like, I'm just waiting for them to turn on, so...
Yeah, right. Hopefully, we'll see them.
We have correspondence from the Middlesex Canal Commission. This is in response to correspondence that Paul Looney had provided to the commission regarding their concerns about the dog park. We did put them on notice, as I referenced at the prior Board of Selectmen's meeting. They responded with a number of concerns, issues, one suggesting that the town was unaware of the presence of the canal, which I would categorically suggest is not true. Paul Looney, as the town engineer, was well aware that this, that the Middlesex Canal is a historic area, and the design of the dog park was done in such a way as to avoid any impact on the canal itself. They're looking for specific items to be addressed by the town, some of which we had already planned to do, which, some of those things, including the cleaning up, if you will, or maintenance around the kiosk that's there, that's already in the works, clearing and, you know, essentially maintaining the trail that leads, will lead around the dog park. There are some things that we will take under advisement. They're looking to have the town provide a sign, signage for the Middlesex Canal State Heritage Trail, and to perform some measure of maintenance on the trail. Those things we will take under advisement. We have correspondence from the Middlesex Canal Commission, just providing notice about their annual meeting, which is coming up on March 31st, 3:15 PM at the Middlesex Canal Museum, Faulkner Mills, 71 Faulkner Street in Billerica. We have correspondence from the Alcohol Beverage Control Commission, an advisory regarding powdered alcohol. I'll just read this into the record. On March 14th, 2016, Governor Baker signed into law an act relative to substance use, treatment, education, and prevention. This act, in part, updates the Liquor Control Act, Mass. General Law, Chapter 138. The act defines powdered alcohol as "a non-medicinal product in powder or crystalline form that contains alcohol intended for consumption by direct use or when mixed with water or another substance. The act prohibits anyone, including all licensees in the Commonwealth, from selling, manufacturing, and/or possessing powdered alcohol. Please be aware that violation of this law is now punishable by a fine of not less than $100 and up to $1,000. This advisory replaces the ABCC's March 12, 2015 advisory regarding powdered alcohol. As a reminder, all licensees must ensure they are in compliance with the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and that sale of alcohol and alcoholic beverages take place only as authorized by applicable law." The next correspondence is from Jacqueline Santini. She's expressing interest in what will be a vacancy on the zoning Board of Appeals. I'll just, for the record, read her letter into the record. "To whom it may concern, I am writing to you today to inform you of my interest in the position that may be opening, open up with the Board of Appeals. I've been a resident of Wilmington for over 20 years and have been seeing the many positive changes in our town. I would like to have the opportunity to work on the board, to contribute to the board's continued success in keeping Wilmington the great community that it is. As an added note, I have given the high school information on scholarship opportunity from the Greater Boston Association of Realtors, and I am presently working on putting together a grant for Wilmington's new dog park." She includes her resume, and I would also just note, as part of this correspondence was provided to the board, there is a letter dated March 10th from Charles Boyle to the Board of Selectmen. "Dear Honorable Board, it has been my privilege to serve as a member of the Board of Appeals for almost 24 years. My current appointment on the board will expire on April 30, 2016. While I have enjoyed serving the town in this position, I wish to respectfully decline reappointment to the board. I have valued serving on the board and making whatever contribution I could to regulating the use of land in the town and responsibly managing the town's growth. But at this point in my life, I hope to spend more time with my growing family and on other charitable endeavors. I appreciate the faith and confidence the Board of Selectmen have placed in me over the years, and am grateful for having been given the opportunity to serve. Sincerely, Charles Boyle."
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a quick comment? Charlie Boyle is an outstanding guy. He's a classy guy. He served on the Board of Appeals for many years, and it's unfortunate to see a guy let him go. And I'm just wondering, we received that letter March 10th, but we never were disclosing it now, right, Jeff?
Yes.
Has this been public? Because I find it interesting, we're getting a letter for somebody seeking appointment, and this is the first time it's become public record.
I received a letter already from Charlie Boyle indicating that he wasn't going to be...
No, earlier, but now we're just reading it into the record now. See what I'm saying? I received the same letter you're talking about, but I'm just, you know, I just, you know, and this is the first time we're acknowledging it, you know, so. And we have this letter from the Santini woman, you know, so I just, what a coincidence, that's all. Thank you.
We have correspondence from Jill Reddish, Verizon. It's just a notice of rate increases effective May 1st, 2016. Their monthly files, digital adapter TV equipment for business customers will increase $2.01 per adapter from $5.99 to $8.01 per adapter per month. We have correspondence from Jane Lyman from Comcast, noting that the effect of April 12, 2016, the El Jazeera America has announced it will cease operational programming on channels 107 and 254.
Oh, that's, what a shame. Next on our agenda is a board to consider by our own Department of Veterans Services Director, Lou Smaglia, who is requesting the use of town streets for the conducting of Memorial Day Parade on May 30th. Lou, do you want to present that?
Yeah, I guess. We can bring it up in a couple of weeks if we'd like. We have plenty of time. No, I...
Lou, you're all right. I like the way anyone says that about you guys.
Yes, it's just the annual Memorial Day Parade and ceremony at the Wildwood Cemetery after. Everybody knows we start out at Market Basket, take a left, go down to Church Street, and the youth groups usually finish up at the common, and then the honor guards and the families go to the cemetery, or cemetery for the ceremony at 11 o'clock. And just so everyone knows, there is a process, an application, if your organization or float or something would like to be in the parade, to contact our office, Veteran Services, and there's an application and a rule book, if you will, and letting know the rules and guidelines of participating in the parade. And the youth groups form up at the Wilmington House Pizza, and all the adult groups and the bands and different organizations start out at Market Basket.
Thank you. It's always a great year, and it's always beautiful and sunny out. I don't know how you pull that off, every year. Is there a motion?
Move to grant the quest. Second, I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Look forward to that. Next item is a board to consider item from Dana Burnham, on behalf of the Wilmington Farmers Market. Jeff, I'll let you go through the details of it if you could. Jeff, I'll let you go through the details of it, if you could.
Sure. So the request here, the Wilmington Farmers Market is seeking approval from the Board of Selectmen, once again, hold the market on the Swain Green on Sundays beginning June 12 through October 9, 2016, giving us a similar mid-June to mid-October season as we've had in the years past. This year, our sixth, we would like to keep our hours the same as last year, and the market opening at 10 AM and ending at 1 PM. We believe this schedule suits the market customers, yet has no negative impact on the town. We have checked with the town manager's office, and are assured the high school graduation will not conflict with the market. As in the past, if the market interferes with the fun on the fourth activities, we are willing to close on the market, the market on the Sunday. However, if plans move forward for an event on the morning of July 5, I think she perhaps means July 3, we'd ask that the board consider letting the market open that day. In our opinion, a stroll over to the market would be a great post-breakfast activity. As always, the Board of Directors of the Wilmington Farmers Market greatly appreciates the support of the Selectmen, the town manager, and all the town departments, who continue to assist in bringing the market to Wilmington season after season. Please let me know if you have any questions. Thank you, thank you for your consideration, Dana Burnham. We have no concerns in terms of those Sundays.
So Jeff, in taking the vote with your question regarding that date, would you be looking potentially for a motion to grant the request with subject to mutual understanding regarding that one portion of the memo?
Regarding the July 4? Yes, I mean, I, I think it would be appropriate to reserve the option to provide them that opportunity if it works, yeah.
Thank you. So, is there a motion?
Motion to grant the request.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there further discussion on that? I'd just make a note that it is July 3, that the Sunday, the memo from her says the 5th, just to correct the record. Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion? No? All in favor? Unanimous. Next on our list is a Board to Consider from Christina Stewart, the Library Director. Let's see, to run a End of Summer Reading Bash, August 11, from 5 to 8. I don't know if there's any more. Jeff, I'll let you articulate the nuances of it.
That's, that's it. It's intended for residents welcoming families, including, will include music games, activities for all ages. Participants will be able to purchase a light supper or snack, and this is all to celebrate reading for children. There'll be some prizes, and there, Tina is looking for permission to use the Swain Green on August 11, from 5 PM to 8 PM. We have no issues or conflicts.
Very well.
Moved to grant the request.
Motion's made, seconded, and seconded. Discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Very well. Jeff, I'm signing, so if you don't mind taking the next Board to Consider item.
The next one is Board to Consider, Ratification of My Appointment to a Vacancy on the Historical Commission. Mr. Joseph Muse, 16 Grant Street, would be filling a one-year vacancy, so the position expires in 2017. Mr. Muse had submitted an application of interest, and he notes he owns a printing business. His interest, though, is in working with the Historical Commission. I've met with him. He's also had conversations with the Chair of the Historical Commission, as well as Terry McDermott, the curator. He has a particular interest, not only in working with the Historical Commission, but also in engaging in collecting artifacts, or kind of digging up artifacts, if you will, for lack of a better description. So I think he would be a good addition to the Commission, and have appointed him subject to the Board's ratification.
So it requires a motion for us to ratify that appointment? Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second is the discussion. I see none. All in favor? All in favor? Thank you. It's unanimous. I want to thank Mr. Muse for volunteering and stepping up and participating in the public process. It's good to have him on board. We have some licenses to approve. The next on our list is a taxi cab license for Wilmington Taxi.
Yes, this is a, an application from Timothy J. Flynn, doing business as Wilmington Taxi, 253 Woburn Street. This is an annual renewal. This is the only taxi vendor we have in town. Do have recommendations from the police chief. Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of both the 2016 application for taxi cab owner's permit and the application for the taxi cab driver's permit requested by Timothy J. Flynn of Wilmington Taxi, 253 Woburn Street. Our review of Mr. Flynn and Wilmington Taxi has determined there is no evidence to hinder being granted the permit as requested.
Thank you, Ms. O'Connell. Is there any, is there a motion to grant this request?
To move.
Second. Made and seconded is discussion. I see none. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. You can jump right to the next one.
The next request is for a, a license for ice cream, Hawk and Pedal license for ice cream delivery, and this is by three individuals, all part of the same family. Joseph Delock, Stephen Delock, and Nicholas Delock, and they will, they have their state licenses, you will note in your packet. At the time, we just had the, the state licenses were expiring in April of this year. We've since received their new license from the state, which expires in April of 2017. We have recommendations from the police chief. Upon review, the Wilmington Police Department recommends approval of the 2016 applications for permit to Hawk and Pedal requested by Stephen Delock, 150 Sawyer Lane, Tewksbury, Nicholas Delock, 150 Sawyer Lane, Tewksbury, Joseph Delock, 150 Sawyer Lane, Tewksbury. And also a recommendation from Shelley Newhouse, recommending approval of the Hawk and Pedal license for Mimzy Ice Cream.
I would accept a motion to approve the Hawk and Pedal license.
So moved. Second.
Motion's made and seconded, and other is the discussion. See none? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. That was actually 12 and 13, right?
Yes.
12 and 14, great. We are now at public comments. Questions? Concerns? Thank you all for being here. New Business Committee reports. If it's all right, I'll start down to the left. Ms. O'Connell?
Yes, I just wanted to not take away the privilege of Jeff, given important dates, but tomorrow is the big day. We've been working on the Entile project, as you know, collectively as a town since 2012. Certainly, I'm speaking about it right now, but I, there are so many people to give credit to, and I'll, I won't go through all that tonight, but I just wanted to let you all know that you did receive an invitation. The opening, the groundbreaking ceremony is tomorrow, Tuesday, March 29, at 8 AM. Yes, it is early, but that was to try and allow people the opportunity to get to work on time, so that they could do both. And I certainly want to thank the town manager, and I also want to thank this board. I know many of you can't be there for very good reason with family and work commitments, but I just wanted to personally thank each and every one of you for your support up to this point, and we still have a lot left to do, but it's a very exciting day. Like to acknowledge Kevin Kyra, who's here in the audience, who is the vice chair, and quite frankly, has just been a great person to partner with this as a, as a leader with the group, working with Jeff and Kendra, to, you know, work with the committee and try and bring together a product that the community has endorsed and that we can all be proud of. So, super excited for tomorrow, and thank you very much, once again, for your support.
Very good. Looking forward to it. What's the weather for tomorrow?
No rain, but cool.
It's gonna be perfect.
It's gonna be perfect. No matter what, it's perfect. Very good. Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, I just want to bring up one point. At the last Board of Appeals meeting, the town manager was there, he did a good job presenting, on behalf of the town, the application. I was there also in the audience and spoke about the change. And from what I understand, the board did accept it, because it gives us another bite at the apple legally. It was a new application, I know it's a new plan, and it was a new vote. And since that time, I know Mr. Loud, I guess, did contact town council on the first application and had to recuse himself. And to Mr. Loud's credit, he also seeked the guidance of town council once again because of the new application, and he's taken town council's advice. Now, I did vote for Mr. Vermin last time, but with all due respect to Mr. Vermin, how come we don't see, this is a new application, it's a new vote. I believe Mr. Vermin should be coming before the board to ask if he can allow to participate, or has he already talked to town councils, and it's fine. Because it's a new vote, new application. I believe Mr. Vermin should, should at least submit a letter to us before our next meeting to allow whether him he can vote on this, because it's a new application.
I have not had any conversations with Mr. Vermin, so I don't know whether he's had any consultation with council or not on this matter.
I would assume that he would have to do the same thing over again, because it's a new vote, new application, and it's a new plan. Ed Loud did take the initiative to seek advice from council the second time around, and he's able to do that. I don't believe Mr. Vermin has done that, so I don't think Mr. Vermin can really participate in this vote. That's my opinion right now, unless town council seeks otherwise, but I think he should have did the same thing the first time. I did vote for Mr. Vermin the first time, and now he should have did the same thing, so I don't believe Mr. Vermin can really participate in this vote.
I could be wrong here, but I, I think the votes, the vote that the Zoning Board of Appeals took last week, I believe that he, he would have been able, and I think it was prudent and appropriate for him to participate in that vote, because it was a vote only on whether or not the proposal had, was materially different from the first proposal. Whether or not he can participate in the next vote, I would agree with you, Mr. McCoy, that it's, for all intents and purposes, it's effectively the same as the last time, and that, that he should endeavor to follow the same practice that he did then in order to be considered eligible to vote. I suspect he knows that, too. It's only been a couple of days, so, but, but I, I think it's prudent for you to bring it up, and I appreciate you doing so.
So I'd imagine, by, we're gonna, what, meet before the next vote of the Board of Appeals, I assume, right?
Yes, the next board meeting is the 11th. The Board of Appeals is on the 13th, so I would, I would expect that he will submit a letter to the Board of Selectmen seeking consideration.
All right. All right, thank you.
So I'm gonna go in line here, if I may.
Thank you, that's all I have to say.
The, yeah, nothing of massive substance, other than I just wanted to recognize that it was last Thursday that I had the great pleasure of working side by side with our colleague, Judy O'Connell. I didn't finish with that one. We were judges at the Wilmington Educational Foundation's annual spellingbee, and it's a great, it's a great event. It's, it's a lot of fun. Teams were set up, and I just wanted to say thank you, Judy, for participating. It was a fun evening, and I haven't heard the, the results yet in terms of finances, but the Educational Foundation raises funds that evening that they do very good work with in benefit of the students in the, in the town. So, thanks to all the participants, and thank you, Judy, for playing with me. Lou, you're up.
I'm good.
Mr. Newhouse?
Just to thank Judy for the acknowledgement of the Board of Selectmen with regard to the Entile Farm groundbreaking and the support of the, of the board. I'm one of those members that has family commitments in, in the morning at that time, so I can't make it, but wish you the best and to you and the entire committee.
It's at Aidingham, that's where it is, yes, that's right. Jeff, important dates, please.
Important dates, as noted, tomorrow will, will all be, or most of, many of us will be at the Cross Street for the Entile Recreation Facilities groundbreaking. April 2 is the Rabies Clinic Public Buildings Department, noon to 2 PM. April 4, the last date of registered vote for the annual town election and town meeting at the town clerk's office. The town clerk's office opens from 8:30 AM and will remain open until 8 PM. The April 11 is the next Selectmen's meeting. April 21 is the next Facilities Master Plan Committee meeting here in Room 9 at 7. April 23 is the town election. Polls open from 8 AM and remain open until 8 PM. And then April 30 is the annual town meeting. High School Auditorium begins at 10:30.
Thank you very much. Unless there's anything else, I'd accept a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Made and seconded, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Thank you.